The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of July 16th was convened virtually through the district software program. The statement of compliance setting forth date, time, location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act and roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Time for a flag salute. Everyone will join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, in a moment Thank you. Let's begin. With you, Dr. Toback.
So what I'd like to do is I would like to actually forego my administrative summary report this evening because really there's just so many different issues and at this point, what we need to talk about is our district goals and also the presentation about a return to school. But I do have one part that I have to attend to, which is the HIV report. So during this reporting period, there was one incident that was reported as HIV. That incident was found to be an actual case of HIV after investigation. So now, if it's all right, we can move on to the presentation of the 2020-2021 district Okay. So if you can go up one, Joe. Ready? So what we'd like to do is also introduce Reichman, our assistant superintendent, who will be co-presenting our district goals. So we're very happy to start our meeting by sharing our district goals for the upcoming school year. District goals are a very important part of our work in Wayne and have helped with many improvements in the school district. For example, some of the district goals from prior years include our wellness goal for students and staff, our full-day kindergarten goal, our marketing and public relations goal, our one-to-one computing goal, and other goals focused on safety and security, the No Place for Hate program, and the expansion of our ESL program. So it's exciting to think about how these goals have helped to improve our school system. And this year, we're glad to be able to share two more important goals. So what I'd like to do is get to the first goal about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Okay, so Mr. Bichard, thank you. First goal should come as no surprise for those that follow our Board of Education meetings. At the last meeting, the board issued a statement against racism and called upon the administration to develop a diversity, equity, and inclusion goal, and that is the goal you will see tonight. So as you go through the goal, Mr. Bichard, if you can go to the next page. With the goals, I'm sorry, with the board's statement against racism and a directive to establish a diversity, equity, and inclusion goal, we recognize that the foundations for future inequity are sometimes first established unconsciously in school systems. So what we're talking about is unconscious bias, where in some cases stereotypes or belief that influence behavior lead to different types of discriminating behavior. So it exists outside of a person's awareness. If you can go on. The goal essentially calls for each school community to come together and look at our operations with consideration to issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The goal also calls for action to be taken incrementally as opposed to waiting for the conclusion of the goal in June of 2021. So what that means is ultimately as issues are identified and solutions are found, that we take action during the course of the year. So there is no lag time between us determining what is a course of action that was appropriate for the district and taking action. The goal also includes, if you go to the next page, this is really where a lot of our supporting activity is found. So this is really the nitty-gritty part of the goal. The goal includes formation of committees and subcommittees to address a variety of topics, one of them being the development of a district commitment statement for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Another activity includes the formation of a subcommittee to assess nicknames, mascots, slogans, and school symbols that may be offensive or counterproductive to our mission, value, and goals. This part of the goal will address concerns that may be expressed about one of our mascots tonight. Okay? If you can keep going along. The goal also calls for an advancement of our No Place for Hate program. It calls for professional development for teachers under the New Jersey Department of Education Equity and Professional Learning Framework, and also to develop a written plan and budget to support our efforts. So that is our first goal. Board members, at this point, what I'd like to do is turn things over to Mrs. Reichman. However, I would like to allow the opportunity for board members to ask questions if you have any.
Anyone? Go ahead.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Scherer has her hand up. I'm sorry.
I just say that if we're going to put committees together to go over this goal, that all stakeholders need to be involved, but it should be Wayne residents that should be in the committee. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Scherer. Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Toback? Yep, you can go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present our second goal, which is the Return to School Plan. Our shift to distance learning began on March 18th, and at that time, we anticipated that our schools would be closed for two weeks. We thought we would then have our spring break period and return to school. Sadly, things did not work out as we had hoped, and as the COVID-19 virus spread through our community and the state of New Jersey, Governor Murphy announced that school would remain closed and distance learning would continue. While we were prepared with a distance learning plan that was approved and recognized by the county superintendent, we realized that the overall needs would require greater access to video conferencing and video instructional tools. We expanded our professional development training options to enhance our model and further developed our teachers and staff in these areas and deployed hundreds of devices to students and staff. You can advance the next slide. The NJDOA recently issued the Road Back Restart and Recovery Plan for Education, requiring each district to develop a plan to ensure a hybrid model of learning where there's a combination of in-person and remote learning for all students. To provide the safest learning for all of our students and staff, we are committed to developing Distance Learning 2.0 Plan that includes a hybrid of in-person and remote learning with student cohorts that meet the NJDOA requirements. A cohort model will result in reduced class sizes, reduced transportation loads, and time to carry out a significantly higher standard for cleaning and sanitizing. We know that in the fall, our students will return to school with a combination of some in-person instruction and some remote instruction. There is also a possibility that we can be ordered to close schools and switch to a fully remote or distance learning model at any time. To make decisions about the best methods for a combination of virtual instructional delivery and in-person instruction, we needed to learn from our staff, students, and parents. We also needed to consider research in neuroscience and developmental psychology that can guide districts through this unprecedented shift to virtual learning. While this crisis has led to many negative outcomes, we can also choose to view it as an opportunity for reimagining and improving remote teaching and learning. The goal for the 2021 school year is to develop and enhance Distance Learning 2.0 Plan. The plan must allow for a stronger connection between teachers and students and peers, and students and peers, while also offering adaptability to a variety of unanticipated changes. Time is of the essence, and this work will begin immediately and continue throughout the school year. This slide details the plan, just all the work that would be done to fully execute the plan. And as you can see here, some of the work has begun, gathering information from our stakeholders, devising a plan, which we will present tonight, seeking input from our community, which is super important. And we do have a timeline, and we'll need sometime in August to submit our final plan for the Board of Education. After that happens, we'd like to start working with our teachers as soon as possible to provide professional development. Any questions?
At this time, what I'd like to do is just, you could note about full-time kindergarten. So ultimately, we have a multi-year goal to bring full-day kindergarten to the district, and that's still moving ahead. The renovations at the Prekna School, the opening of the Early Childhood Center in just a few weeks, freeze-up classroom space needed for full-day kindergarten, the original goal called for the start of full-day kindergarten in September of next year. We're very excited about that. We continue to work towards that call. One of the factors that we have always communicated is an understanding there's an ongoing positive financial position for the district that was really a key to final implementation. So obviously, we're a very uncertain time. Financial impact of the coronavirus has yet to be fully determined, but we are certainly still moving ahead this year and getting ready to open full-day kindergarten for September of next school year.
Go right ahead, Dr. Toback.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is before we get started on our return to school proposal, I'd like to just mention that we have over 1,000 viewers for this board meeting tonight, and so that maxes out our system. However, we have a backup plan. So for those of you who are interested, there is opportunities to watch the board meeting on Channel 77. So like I said, we're maxed out on viewers as far as our software goes, but you can watch the board meeting on Channel 77.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
We couldn't even fit that many in the council chambers.
No.
Welcome, everyone.
So that's a good, that's a good thing. Obviously, everyone is very interested. Okay, so keeping that all in mind, what I'd like to do is start with our return to school proposal. So for Mr. Bichard, if you could please pull up the presentation. So Mrs. Reichman and I are glad to have this opportunity to present this proposal to the Board of Education and also to our community. This proposal represents many days, hours of work in consideration of many different options and possibilities. Each school district is different, and each has great flexibility when it comes to planning for returning students and staff to school. So any, any return to school plan or proposal in the end is hundreds of pages, right, with backup information, things like that. We did everything we could to condense this proposal to make it understandable, but every page is important. Okay, so what I'd like to do is call everyone's attention to just the title page. There's a few noteworthy facts for the title page. One, this is a proposal, and I'll talk in a few slides about the timeline and where we are as a district and what we need to do and the timeline that's required for that. Okay? Note, it also indicates that it's to be modified as conditions change. One thing we can be sure of, if there's only one thing we can be sure of when it comes to COVID-19, is that changes will inevitably happen, so we can expect the unexpected. The other thing to understand, and it's important, is the language Phase 1. Okay? So the idea, at least for now, is that this plan would extend from September 8th to November 25th, which is Thanksgiving, the end of the first marking period. That's a traditional time for the first part of the school year. Again, things can change. Conditions can change for better or for worse, and adjustments would need to be made. But in any event, the final plan will also be done in phases. Maybe the phases will look a bit different, but we'll go through different phases, and we'll see how we think, how things go, and then we would reassess at the end of that phase. Okay? So Mr. Bichard, if you can go to the next page. So as you can see with this slide, we've been working since May to develop a plan to return to school even before such a plan was required. At the time, we had almost no official guidance other than a few pages from the Centers for Disease Control, which was provided to help administrators make determinations about the reopening of schools. We started with one committee, which included a board member, teachers, and administrators from across the school district. Our initial meeting was overwhelming because it became evident that there were literally hundreds of important questions about if schools could possibly reopen and how that might be possible. Seeing that we were up against an impossible task, we enlisted more members of the community. We included parents, and in the end, we had about 100 people that formed subcommittees, which were designed around the CDC guidance, but also around educational concerns. So as you can see with the yellow highlighting, we're at the July 16th Board of Education meeting, and tonight we are sharing the proposal. After the proposal is shared, it will be posted for public review and comment, and we'll enter a period of time where you'll have a chance to respond, to express your opinion. So we're thinking of gathering information by running something everyone's familiar with, a thought exchange. And we're also going to complete a survey to determine the comfort level of parents with returning their children to school. So if we can go to the next page. So I did want to take a moment to thank all of our return to school chairs and our subcommittee members. As I said, that adds up to about 100 people, including parents from the community. So we'd also like to thank all of our administrative team. The administrative team has been working with the past few weeks tirelessly to create a thoughtful and comprehensive proposal. So if you can go to the next page. Okay? So the list of subcommittees are as follows. You could read that, and you can see most of those are self-explanatory, right? So as you can see, if you look at all the different factors that go into our return to school proposal, and also consider the fact that all these things are bound by issues like board policy and procedures that exist in the district, longstanding practices, and you look at all these different things, you can understand how overwhelming this is. So for example, health and wellness, it's a very important issue. Guidance from the Department of Ed, very important. CDC guidance, student connections, the ability for students to connect with teachers and their peers, a better model for distance learning, our needs of our staff, our facilities, the input from the committees. All of this was balanced out, like I said, within board policy and also within our existing employment contracts. So it's really a very complex undertaking, and to find common ground, which is what the goal was, we had to balance among multiple issues with the help of our committees. So there's much to consider in the process of developing this proposal. Okay? If we can go to the next page. Okay. So I think it's time to get down to business. The proposal calls for a hybrid schedule, which means a combination of in-school and virtual instruction. It also calls for cohorts, which is one of the suggestions from the New Jersey Department of Education. So why would we have a hybrid schedule? Health and safety is always our top priority. The CDC, the Department of Ed, the Department of Health, guidance requirements, our facility and staffing limitations, and I'm going to give you an example of that when you see a photo on one of our upcoming slides. We also considered the return to school experiences in other countries. So there was other countries that did return to school this spring, so we looked at some of those returns. We looked at all the results of our committee, our committee work. We also considered enhanced cleaning and the opportunity to do that. The idea of maintaining cohorts, which in a COVID-19 environment allows for contact tracing and quarantines, so that way larger parts of the district can remain open if there was a case COVID-19. Also, planning and enhanced virtual learning experiences, flexibility, adaptability for parents, students, and staff. And because of the hybrid schedule is based on our existing schedule, it's easy to understand. So let's go to the next page. Okay. So this is an important slide, and the photo is an example of a classroom that is set up for hybrid instruction in a socially-distanced environment. Each desk is set up for one student on the A rotation and another student on the B rotation, which means each set of desks represents one student on any given school day. With social distancing in mind, you can see that at most, if you count them up, we could fit maybe 12, maybe 13 students in this classroom, leaving room up front for the teacher and leaving a minimal amount of space on the perimeter of the room to store things, to keep your instructional supplies, coats, things like that. So this is, this photo really gets to the heart of the challenge that you're up against and why a hybrid schedule is essential. So we can go to the next page. So what we have here is our hybrid schedule is basically an idea that on Monday and Tuesday, Cohort A, about half the class, would be in-person at school, and Cohort B would be out of school. On Wednesday, across the district, we're proposing a Wellness Wednesday. And so you know, there's a lot of issues regarding wellness, so there's also needs for remediation. There's opportunities for virtual assemblies, virtual field trips, planning for cohorts. So in other words, the opportunity for teachers to reach to the cohort that is not in school to provide additional instruction. It also provides time for cleaning between cohorts. So the bottom line is that one group of students is Monday, Tuesday. There's a thorough cleaning of the schools, and then on Thursday and Friday, we have another cohort of students that come in. That's for the elementary and the middle schools. Okay? So it also allows for some clubs, some activities, other things to happen. So that is the hybrid model for the elementary and the middle schools. That's the cohort part of it. So you can see, students are in school two days a week, out three days a week. Go to the next page. The bell schedule, it's a reduced day, so you can see the school day goes from 8:55 to 1:45. Lunch and snack will be offered, so there would be no centralized lunch. This is something we spent a lot of time considering, and we also looked at what a lot of other districts are doing. And many districts are not offering a centralized lunch. They're offering a grab-and-go lunch, which allows students to take the lunch home. There's snack possibilities during the day, but for the most part, there is no centralized opportunity to eat lunch for students or staff members. And there's also, after this, there's the afternoon, right? So once the students go home, the teachers are still at work, and the afternoon virtual instruction is an opportunity for teachers to now reach out to the cohort that is not in-person and provide instruction. So the bottom line is that the students are dismissed, teachers have flex time, but the idea is that that part of the day is their time to attend to the students that are in the other cohort that is not in-person. So that's a very important part of the plan, and like I said, we think that's important because it keeps the students connected at all times. So everybody's in school at least two days a week, and everyone is connected to their class. Okay? It also allows, in the event of, so say there is a case of COVID-19, like I said, the cohort part that allows for contact tracing, that allows for other investigations to take place through the Department of Health. The Department of Health is a key player in any return to school plan because in addition to making recommendations, they're ultimately the authority in the community when it comes to contact tracing and making determinations about who would be quarantined, who wouldn't be quarantined, what steps need to be taken by the district to ensure the health and safety of students and staff. So it's a very important part of the district's plan. So if we can go on. So you can see, it's something similar for the middle schools. There's a little additional time that's allotted, and that's, that allows students who are fairly close in other classes to go to their next classroom, but then do a little cleaning to make sure their desks are clean, to wipe down their desks and spray their desks, and make sure that ultimately, as a student leaves the room, another student comes in, but there's a cleaning process that takes place in between every class. You can also see in this schedule, there's grade six, seven, eight flex period. That is where lunch would normally be served, but this is an opportunity for students to go outside for recess and participate in other activities. You see, there's a grab-and-go, lunch and dismissal, and then same thing. There's an afternoon virtual instructional period intended to allow teachers to work with the students that are on the out-of-school cohort. You go to the next page. Okay. So with regard to the proposed high school schedule, this is a little bit different, and this involves three cohorts. So the idea is that the block schedule remains in place. So you go in for your block. Wednesday is still a virtual day, so it's a virtual day at all levels, but the block goes on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, which is one block, one full block, so one full rotation in the high school schedule. And you can see that Cohort A is a third-of-the-class, Cohort B, Cohort C. So why are there three cohorts? And you will read, and you will probably see on social media that there are a number of high schools in Bergen County that have gone to like an A-day, B-day rotation, right? And so obviously, we have three days, but the idea is that those high schools are much smaller than ours. We have to consider that our high school is a very, both of our high schools are very large high schools. So if you had only two cohorts, that would mean, depending on who's in attendance and everything else like that, you'd probably have somewhere between 700 to 800 staff and students together in a building on any given day. With the three cohorts, you could see the number of students together is dramatically reduced to about the size that you would see in these Bergen County school districts that have much smaller high schools. They keep their numbers right around where we are, but we have very large high schools. As a result of that, we have to take some steps. So we do have the virtual instruction, and it's also allowing for reduced traffic in the hallways, because when you have over 1,000 students, 1,300 students, 1,400 students in the hallways, that's some serious traffic. It also allows for reduced bus ownership, which Mrs. Reichman will talk about transportation a little further. But we also know that high school populations tend to be a little more susceptible to the coronavirus. So what this two-week cohort means is that quarantine groups means it is great, we have a greater likelihood of remaining open. So in other words, if there's a group of students and one of the students or the student is exposed, in some way or another, there is a cohort that is affected by the coronavirus. That cohort is out for two weeks, and then they come back in. So it allows for all the things that would need to happen as far as quarantining, it allows for a lot of other things, like contact tracing, if in fact, we wind up in a situation where there is a staff member or a student who's affected by the coronavirus. Okay? If we go to the next page. So here is a little more complicated, but you can see the same idea. It's, the school day rolls along in a reduced time period. You have a grab-and-go, lunch and dismissal, so it's like a muddled dismissal, where there are fewer people going and congregating at a single location at any given time, and then the afternoon, there's virtual instruction. So same thing, the goal of the teachers during that time period is attend to the cohorts of students that are not in school. Go to the next page, please. Okay? So this is the Early Childhood Center. We have a new Early Childhood Center that's opening, so we have a hybrid cohort schedule for that as well. You can see Wednesday means the virtual day. You can see the AM, the pre-M, and the full-day preschool. So I am quite sure that among the 1,000 people that are tuned into this meeting, there are quite a few that are saying, what about childcare? And how is it going to be possible? What can I do to maintain my employment? And so we do consider things like that, and we spend a lot of time looking at different options. The one thing that the district will continue to do is we're going to run a before and after care program, and we're actually going to expand those services. So for elementary students, once dismissal time happens, we're still going to have, we're going to have after care run until 6:00 PM. So that involves expanded hours. We're also in contact with the Boys and Girls Club, and we're also interested in partnering with the YMCA to provide spaces for parents. So the Boys and Girls Club has capacity for 110 students. The YMCA has capacity for 120 students. The one thing that is part of this proposal, and it's been a little bit of an obstacle, is K-RAP. So we're trying to maintain K-RAP. We've worked very hard, but we do believe it's going to be very difficult to do because of our plan for special needs students. And Mrs. Reichman will talk about that in a few minutes. There's an effect ultimately in one of the things that we're trying to do, and so at this point, it's going to be hard to retain K-RAP. As you can see, I just wrote a few comments. The district was going to make every effort to keep costs minimal for our programs. While there is a cost involved, there are options for our parents, and so that's what we could do for now. We're going to continue to look at different opportunities that might become available to help out with childcare issues. Okay? If you can go on. All right. So now, a very important, go ahead, Mrs. Reichman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you ready?
I'm protecting students and staff. You want to take it from here?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So that was my cue. Well, consistent with the goal that we presented earlier this evening, the number one priority in doing all of this planning and everything that we're sharing out tonight is prioritizing the safety of our students and staff. We know, based on everything that we've learned through our committees and our discussions with staff members, hearing from parents, and the plan that was set forth by the New Jersey Department of Education, that we want to make sure we increase in-person time. And that was something that we were charged with doing, having in-person time available for all of our students. We also know that we want to increase time for video conferencing on days when students aren't in school, and that was the reason for offering a reduced day. And the last thing is making sure that the plan that we put in place, as long as we're allowed to be open, is sustainable. So the only way to have a sustainable plan is to keep everyone as healthy as possible and keep things as clean as possible. Listed here, it really just highlights and summarizes things included in our detailed plan that we have done. Dr. Toback shared, we are limiting our class sizes. You saw that with the cohort model, and you were able to see an example of a classroom where social distancing is in place. We're ensuring that students can sit in the elementary schools in the same desk because those students keep items in their desk every day, and then when student B comes, they sit in a different desk. And then we have adequate time between cohorts at all three levels for extensive cleaning. Right now, we're exploring Uh, right now, we're exploring screening apps, so that we know that anyone who enters the building on any given day, that includes staff and students, um, is screened um, and can verify that they do not have any symptoms, they do not have a fever before getting on a school bus, um, before coming into our schools. Once we have more information um, and the specifics about what we'll be doing, of course, that'll be shared out later. We also know that our plan needs to include flexibility, and we will have a survey going out, because, you know, there may be parents who choose to keep their children home altogether, and we will offer a virtual option for those students. Based on what we were able to research this week, uh, many districts had board meetings Tuesday night. Um, and just looking at the data, you know, we saw everything from fifty percent um, down to fifteen percent. So, you know, it'll be interesting and important for us to have that information as soon as possible. Uh, staff members um, who request and meet the parameters will be able to receive accommodations to work from home. Masks uh, will be required, and and again, there's exceptions. And, you know, this was put out in the New Jersey Department of Education guidelines, young children or students um, who have difficulty keeping masks on. And and these were things that would be predetermined by us. We are looking right now at um, sneeze shields. Uh, we already have them in our main offices in high-traffic areas, but there are a number of options for student desks in places where students may be in closer contact, younger students specifically, uh, where they're working with paraprofessionals, or where the teacher might need to get closer. Any added measures we can take, um, we are looking to implement. We will be encouraging flu shots um, for all of our staff and students. Right now, we have purchased a a large number of air scrubbers um, to improve air quality. We set up um, a model in the central office, and the air quality has been tested, and we were able to show that it has improved. We know that these are very effective in high-traffic areas, main offices, um, nurse's office, or open spaces when students walk through cafeterias or gyms in many of our buildings, you have to walk through those spaces to get to a classroom. There are buildings um, where we can add the HEPA, the increased air filters, HEPA filters. And we do have a plan in place to require everyone to keep the windows open, so that the air can continue to circ- circulate. There will be um, a cleaning verification process, which I will talk more specifically about on an upcoming slide. Wednesday is um, a deep cleaning day for buses and facilities. And um, that was, you know, another part of the consideration for having the virtual day. And grab and go lunch model uh, also was something that was recommended. Uh, we did consult with our district physician, and you really don't want to put students in a cafeteria space where, you know, we know the virus is airborne, where this can be circulating and impact a large number of students. So any food, um, it could be snack, and that's something that's being um, discussed, and will most likely be offered at the elementary level, would happen in the classroom, so it's in a smaller space. And we will continue to work with our part, um, on our partnerships with the local Department of Health and the school physician. We can go to the next slide. This slide details um, the enhanced cleaning protocols. I've been learning quite a bit, um, there's a lot of information here. So, you know, just to touch on the most important pieces for you to understand, electrostatic disinfection is something that we will be doing. There's a spray process um, that basically sanitizes all of the surfaces. It's something you can see in the picture, that you can reach greater surfaces much more quickly. And we obviously have a lot of um, building facility requirements during that sanitation time to cover. Um, this is something, you know, also for for sanitizing buses. But more importantly, once we have all these cleaning processes taking place, we wanted to have a verification process in place, which we will do. Um, so that we know that the cleaning protocols that we put in place were actually effective. There's verification tests that will indicate this for us. You can advance to the next slide. Uh, transportation has been a hot topic, and again, a very concerning one, because we have a large, large number of buses in our district. So this is a challenge. You know, the number one priority was to distance as much as possible on our buses. It is not required that you socially distance on a school bus. If you're not socially distanced, it's required that students um, and any staff members on the bus wear masks. For us, the number one priority is distance as much as possible and create the safest environment before, after, when being transported to school for all of our students, and we know we have staff on the bus. The cohort allows for an opportunity for us to have at least fifty percent of the students on the bus. We're also anticipating there may be parents who um, opt to drive their own children to school, and that is information that we'll also capture in the survey that we put out. Um, you, you, looking at our buses, you know, what we're hoping is to have a student on one side, near a window, and then a student all the way across the way on the other side, and no one in between. And that's um, what we're hoping when we say reducing um, the student transportation routes by fifty percent. And um, when we plan our cohorts, there's a great, um, there's a lot of detail that has to go into it. And, you know, initially, we thought, you know, we could look at half of the alphabet, but that's impossible, because in some cases, that may mean you have six students in a class, you know, and eighteen students in another class. So we're going to have to really randomize our classes, look at siblings, look at neighborhoods, and evaluate a lot of things, because we also want to have balanced classes. And student wellness is very important. Sometimes there are certain requests that have been made from the teacher in the year before, um, information shared by parents, and we're very concerned about our students. They were not in school for a great deal of time. We want them to come back to a safe, secure environment, um, everywhere, from the moment they get on the bus in the morning to their entering and leaving the classroom. Super important is um, drivers will always wear masks. We're going to ask our students to wear masks as well, even if they're distanced on the bus, they're walking by um, other people as they get on. Uh, we feel like it's the safest way. We will assign seats. This way, they're on the same seat going in and going out, and um, deep cleaning will occur every Wednesday, um, every night. Cleaning will happen as well. You can advance. Thank you. Uh, this slide really represents our commitment to our enhanced distance learning model. I have to say that um, last week, I met with a new committee that we put together, which was um, put together for the purpose of evaluating our distance learning plan that was put in place in the spring. Uh, it was comprised of teachers from each level, and we did have two parents who weighed in, um, who have students at various levels. One happens to be a superintendent in another district, and it was really nice to hear um, the feedback. But what was interesting was, it was very positive. Um, we did recognize we got off to a shaky start, because we were not one-to-one um, all grade levels. We did not have Google Classroom set up in our kindergarten, first, second-grade classes, um, which wouldn't expect, and that would not have been our model had we stayed in school. But we very quickly set these up. Um, we were very grateful to have our teacher technology coordinator, Tracy Lee, putting together um, a lot of resources. She, we were offering these live, we offered refresher trainings, we set up a teacher resource page, so people had an opportunity, if they weren't available, or if they wanted to um, re-watch and and repeat the training. Uh, this is something that we'll continue to add to. But overall, the feedback was super positive. Of course, the greatest criticism and frustration was that there's no substitute for in-person instruction. And with this new plan, we have an opportunity, not only for students to be in school as much as we feel is safely possible, but we're providing built-in times every day for students to check in, or I should say, for our teachers to check in with students. We're also going to prioritize student wellness, and there are a number of initiatives that we will be able to roll out on Wednesdays. We don't want to um, have any opportunity to minimize the importance of this. The grading and assessment practices were definitely a concern. It was, you know, an unanticipated closure, and there was a lot um, to make decisions about. We had opted not to move towards a pass-bout option, because we wanted to prioritize student learning. However, we know this is an area where we can improve, and um, this is something that we will address. We are looking at um, synchronous learning opportunities for our high school students, and Dr. Borchard is going to share, we have um, an exciting plan in place that we think um, will really help, because I know that there'll be concern about students rotating in on a three-week basis. This opportunity is going to keep our high school students on their daily schedule, so that they have an opportunity, and they'll be accountable for checking into their classes daily. The new technology that um, Dr. Borchard can talk about is something that could be a great enhancement, and we can expand if our pilot works well and our teachers are receptive. I already touched on um, the health and wellness initiatives, but, you know, here, we'll be enlisting our counselors. Um, we'll have specialists who help, but one thing that we realized that um, is super important, that maybe we didn't consider in the spring, there was just too much to think about, and we prioritized our students. But we have deep concern for our parents. It was not an easy time. Um, parents are working, parents were homeschooling their kids. Parents did not, you know, most parents did not go to uh, or receive any kind of training. So we are looking at ways to offer parent workshops, and I think, you know, the priority from what we were able to gather is um, just how, how to respond and talk to your children at home. Uh, it's, it's a lonely time, it's a stressful time, and anything that we could do. Um, we have members on staff who are experts, and we can also bring in experts from the field if we wanted to offer Zoom sessions. And um, ongoing staff development and remote instruction, um, and best practices and resources are a priority. We already started working on a fall staff development series, um, a new teacher, staff development series, and we will continue to um, tap into our teachers and survey them to meet their needs, so that anything that we can do to put them in the best possible position to feel comfortable with delivering remote instruction and using all of the video um, and digital resources that we have in place. Um, you know, they're, they feel comfortable and confident using. We have also added um, a number of new digital resources that will roll out to our teachers in the fall, so that we can assess what the achievement gaps may be, and, you know, our intervention protocols have to look a little bit different, because we're used to having this face-to-face time, small group instruction that occurs daily in the classroom. So, you know, we know that we want to be able to go back in and continuously assess, and then bring together small groups of students to remediate specific skills. And um, for students with special needs, we had really deep concerns. So for this population, these classes are smaller. Um, part of the discussion that Dr. Toback referenced and touched on was creating extra space in the building. We are planning to bring our self-contained special needs students at all grade levels to attend in-person classes four days per week, and they will receive the related services. Um, so we know that this will be um, smaller classes. Um, these are smaller classes, but we need more space, so that when they're in school, we can deliver all their services and meet their needs. We can go to the next slide. Um, at this point, I'm going to invite Dr. Borchard um, to come on and share some of the information about our technology initiatives.
Thank you, Ms. Reichman. Uh, quarantine has taught us many things over the past few months, including how to best support technology and those who use it. My team faced the challenge, worked the problem, and provided support. I'm very proud of my team's effort and the work they put forth. However, our work doesn't stop there. For the 2021 school year, we're going to be implementing some old practices, as well as adopting some new ones to meet the challenges of the changing landscape of teaching and learning. For example, we have a one-to-one initiative in our sixth and ninth grade classes. We're going to continue that initiative, where all incoming sixth graders and ninth graders receive a, a Chromebook. We're expanding that initiative to include every student in grades K through twelve. In the elementary grades, we're repurposing Chromebooks that were previously put in carts, and we're going to assign them to every student individually. For staff members, we're re- refreshing our high school teacher laptops. This is part of a planned uh, uh, program where the teachers' laptops are are near obsolete, and we need to refresh them. We're also providing all middle school teachers with a similar laptop, so that they can uh, provide their virtual instruction. In the elementary schools, we're providing all staff with a Chromebook device. What we learned from the staff, from our elementary staff, the device that they used during quarantine did not meet the needs for virtual instruction. We're providing them an updated laptop, which will suffice the needs for virtual instruction, both in the classroom as well as at home. Ms. Reichman mentioned, as part of our distance learning two-point-oh plan, we're piloting a device called the Swivel, which you can see it right here. It sits in the classroom, and the teacher would wear a device like this around their neck. It acts as a microphone, as well as the opportunity for the teacher to walk freely around the front of the room, while this device will record them and provide live instruction. So the teacher's not uh, held just to the, to their, their laptop. They can move around the classroom, and the camera will follow them. I don't know if you can see them. It will move around them, so. Uh, and as Ms. Reichman mentioned, we're going to be providing that device and piloting it in a number of classrooms, and looking for feedback to see if we're going to expand that pilot program.
So at this point, what I'd like to do is thank everybody. Certainly, we, we very much appreciate, yeah, I obviously had a, a large number of residents that decided to watch our board meeting this evening, and we really, we enjoy your participation. We appreciate you attending. Um, what we're going to do is, as I said, we have a public comment and feedback session that's going to start next week on Monday, July twentieth. And the idea is, there's basically two ways that residents can provide feedback. One is through thought exchange, and so that will involve a central question, and then people can respond to that question on Thought Exchange. And many people are used to using Thought Exchange, but please participate. Let us know what you're thinking about the return to school proposal, and that will be reviewed by the board in advance of our next meeting. So those results will be shared with the board and with the community, so we'll share that as well at the next meeting. And then the other part about it is we're going to complete a survey, and so this is for parents of students in the district. You'll be receiving an email from us, and the whole idea is that now that you are aware of, at least at this point, the proposal that we have, and the enhanced cleaning protocols, and the cohorts, and all the other um, steps that are being taken to protect students and staff. We want parents to feel comfortable with returning to their children to school. We also understand that not all parents are necessarily going to feel comfortable for a variety of different reasons. What we'd like to do is complete a survey, so we know what your preferences are, what you're thinking at this point, and also to provide us with an update about how, if you are eligible for transportation, you'll be using transportation. If you're going to use um, the, the district's transportation, if you're going to transport your child on your own, uh, we need to know that too, because there's a lot of planning that has to happen between now and the first day of school. So added together, um, both, all this information will be shared with the board at our next meeting. Now, the one thing, one piece of unfinished business is also establishing an upcoming board meeting. Board members, um, I previously wrote to you and recommended that we, we will need another board meeting in advance. The public, the final plan must go to the public one month in advance of the start of school, that would be the eighth. And so I think the latest we could possibly do a meeting is September, I'm sorry, would be um, August sixth. However, if the board is interested, maybe August fourth works for you, but it has to be done that week. That allows for a significant amount of time for the public to provide feedback and share thoughts about the proposal. And it also allows you to review, think further about the proposal, and also allows us to look and think further about the proposal and see if there's enhancements we can come up with. I think we have a good starting point, but obviously, there's a lot that has to happen between now. Um, an August twentieth meeting, obviously, that's, that makes it impossible. That would otherwise be our scheduled board meeting, but we should have a resolution to have um, our, our next meeting on August sixth or fourth, depending on the preferences of the Board of Ed.
That concludes your presentation. Did anyone have any questions that they wanted to ask at this time of the administration?
Okay. Um, actually.
Go ahead, Mrs. Go on.
Um, it's just a little note on the windows, um, and the air conditioning. I understand HEPA filters are good, but at the same time, as we've looked at the data and some of the spread, I understand it's not truly airborne, it is mucosal, but mute, it's mucus droplets that travel through the air, right? Um, so the reason why windows are actually more effective than air conditioning is the fact that it's a concentration gradient that you're creating. Droplets travel from a higher to a lower concentration, so the more fresh air you have, the better. Um, I understand we have certain areas that don't have windows, like the hallways where students pass through, and we have to utilize whatever ventilation we can in those areas. Um, but my concern is, we have classrooms where teachers may opt to close windows and have the AC on, which recycles air, which actually is a higher risk. So this is just something to think about as we talk. which recycles air, which actually is a higher risk. So this is just something to think about as we talk about the ventilation within the notes and something to keep in mind. That's all.
If I could add one quick thing about masks also. So as you saw throughout the proposal, there is a requirement for masks. And if you think about it, there's really a very practical reason. And if you think about a typical classroom and every teacher concerned relate to the situation. Ultimately, at some point, students are going to sneeze, right? And so whether it's a student on a bus or there's a student in a classroom, and if students are wearing masks, then the sneeze is contained. Sneeze is not a threat to anybody, especially, like I said, if we start to see a resurgence, it'll be very important to contain that. Otherwise, I think there's quite a few parents that would say, well, listen, that's almost like a health hazard in my classroom. Someone sneezed. And it creates this incredible level of sensitivity where even sneezing now, I think most people feel uncomfortable if someone's sneezing next to you. I think most people kind of take a step back, look sideways, they get their concerns. So the mask part is so important to protect the health and safety of our students. I don't think there's any question that ultimately they have an effect on curbing the spread of COVID-19, and they're required in all sorts of places. There are really not many places you can go indoors, but especially where masks are not required. So we feel that's a very important part of the proposal, and it's something that we really have to adhere to to make sure that the schools are safe for all of our students and stuff, because things will happen. And like I said, if students are wearing masks, then that limits the spread, it limits the threat to other students and to staff members. So very important part of any return to school.
Anyone else? Well, I just want to thank the administration and all of the committee members for their comprehensive work. This has been quite a heavy lift. And again, it's still a work in progress because as Dr. Toback mentioned, the one thing we can count on during this pandemic is change. But we do obviously want to hear from all of you, and I think the thought exchange is going to help in that. So be on the lookout for that coming up on our website. The, I like the idea of the virtual, hopefully, I assume they're virtual parent workshops, Mrs. Reichman. That's a brilliant plan because I think a lot of our parents could use a little guidance there when they're starting to have some issues with their children at home. So at this point, we are going to go to you, Mr. Moffett, and additions and changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Yes, we have a few tonight. The first revision is in the human resource area under section M. Under M7, approval of appointment of extracurricular coaches, please revise line number one, which is Michael McDermott, assistant coach, Fall, September, excuse me, step four at 7,191, which is three fourth stipend. We have another revision on M, as in Mike nine, approval of reappointments of personnel. On the attached paraprofessional aides list, revise line 21 from step eight dash 14 to $20.41 to step five, which is $18.32. Also revise on that paraprofessional aide list, revise line 164 from step eight to 14, which runs from $20.41 to step six, which is $18.84. Under M13, again, in human resource section, approval of additional compensation. Number nine, add item K, which would be Robert Hiddinger. Number 15, add, number 15, line 15, staff would be Kevin Similin. Assignment is to assist with scheduling at Anthony Wayne Middle School. Hours are not to exceed 40. Paid hourly $89.70 an hour from July 17, 2020 to August 28, 2020. Account number 11-dash-triple-zero-dash-two-four-zero-dash-one-zero-three-dash-one-four-dash-triple-zero at 70%. And line account number 11-dash-triple-zero-dash-two-two-one-dash-one-zero-four-dash-fourteen-dash-triple-zero at 30%. Moving on to M16, approval of appointments of volunteers. Change resolution school year from 2019, 2020 to 2020, 2021. Under M17, approval of appointment of extracurricular advisors. Change resolution school year from 2019 to 2020 to 2020 to 2021. We are going to move on to section O, I'm sorry, section P, which is school resource grants. We have added acknowledgement of a grant allocation and the resolution reads as follows. Resolve that the Wayne Township Board of Education has allocated $25,000 of the Title II A portion of the grant known as the Elementary and Secondary Education Act for the purposes of compensating teachers for the preparation of prerecorded instructional lessons in advance of the 2021 school year. The subject funds will support and reduce instructional planning time and allow for more teacher contact time for increased focus on student wellness and health needs. Under school resource legal, under Q, we are adding number one, which is an appeal of a HIP finding. And that action reads, resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and following a hearing with the parents, affirms the initial HIP finding in case 111, which includes a suspension served during the 2019-2020 school year and a psychiatric examination. Moving on to another addition, which is for a WTAA sidebar agreement. That action will read, resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a sidebar agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Township Administrators Association with respect to the carryover of unused vacation and floater days for the 2020, 2021 and 2021 and 2022 school years, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. We are adding another under numbered three, which is approval of settlement agreement. That action will read, whereas the Wayne Township Board of Education sponsored three student tours to Washington DC for its high school students, and whereas the details of the trip were to be arranged for by the Curriculum Travel of America, Inc., which is known as CTA, and whereas the cost of the tours were paid directly to CTA by the parents of the students planning on taking tours. And whereas due to the COVID-19 global pandemic, the tours were canceled. And whereas CTA has offered to reimburse the parents who did not pay for trip insurance, 50% of the cost of the trip to be paid out over a two-year term. And whereas the Board on behalf of the district students, and I should say the students' parents, has agreed to a settlement with CTA whereby the district would make payment of the amount offered by CTA to the parents upon the parent's execution of an assignment and release, and CTA would reimburse the district for amounts paid. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby approves a settlement with CTA memorandum of understanding as follows. Number one, for each parent who did not purchase trip insurance, the Board, upon receipt of an assignment and release, will pay the parents who did not purchase the individual cancellation waiver, the total of all payments made to CTA less 50% of the total trip cost, unless the total of any credit card chargebacks. Two, CTA will reimburse the amounts paid by the Board to the parents in four equal payments as follows. First payment within 60 days of receipt of the assignment and releases, and each successive payment issued at six-month intervals. Be it further resolved that the settlement is conditioned upon execution of the referenced memorandum of understanding between the CTA and the Board, and be it further resolved that the Board President is authorized to sign the memorandum of understanding, and the administration is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to effectuate the purposes of this resolution. That concludes the changes and additions on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett.
One small point on the latest memorandum that was just read, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
The first line needs to read that it was a tours of Washington DC for our middle school students.
Yeah, I was just looking at the actual contract to make sure that that was correct.
Make sure before it's signed that that's, that's.
Yeah, I'm looking at the contract, but we could also correct the minutes on that one, Mr. Moffett. That was an eighth grade trip, not high school.
Yes, I'll note that for the minutes.
Yeah, I think that was just a typo on the revisions to the agenda because it doesn't look like it's specified here in the actual contract that I just signed. So we'll review that too.
Yes, the agreement states three student tours.
Just students, correct. No, not specific to a grade level. Okay, so, thank you very much. Okay, well, we're on to the public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under all business. Okay, now is the time to raise your hand if you wish to be recognized. And Dr. Burchard, you can start whenever you're ready.
Do you want to take a motion on opening?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a mover? I'm sorry. I'm looking to get to them. Stacy, move second. Cheer down, I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead.
Alan Tempesky. He's able to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can begin, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Alan Tempesky, 41 Gibbs Drive. I have, first of all, I want to thank everyone for the presentation. You've done a tremendous job to plan for the students of Wayne. I have, I just have four questions just on the presentation that Dr. Toback and Ms. Reichman did. I just want to clarify and just make sure I understood it correctly. Maybe you could subsequently answer these questions. In my understanding, that the masks are required for students at all times when they enter the school building. So that would include classrooms, hallways, et cetera. And from what I understand, with the exception of students that may have a health issue. So that was my first question. Second question I have is you mentioned the flexibility for parents to continue with remote learning, distance learning at home, if they have a preference. Is that something that has to be elected prior to the school year? Or, for example, if someone sends their student to school and then there's some news reports, they get frightened and they want to keep them home and then come back, is that the flexibility? Is it a one-time thing where you have to elect that prior to the school year or it can change? The third question I have is, I didn't hear anything about, well, I heard the presentation about the technology, but as far as live stream presentation by the teachers, I did know that the Cranford Superintendent Scott Rubin announced that teachers will livestream what is taking place in front of the rooms. The students who are not scheduled to be in person will remain on virtual instruction. That's posted on the internet. And also the Chatham, New Jersey Superintendent Michael LaSousa has done the same. Are we going to have livestream? And I know there's the issue of cameras and setting them up, and that must be a big headache to have that in all classrooms. But is that something that is coming soon? And finally, my fourth question is regarding contact tracing. I didn't hear anything mentioned if someone sadly would get ill in the school. What is going to be the procedure if, when kids are rotating from classroom to classroom in the middle school and high schools or even in other schools? Does that mean the whole school then has to quarantine because you don't know who the person came in contact with? Or is there, what is the plan in place to address that, I guess, is what I'm saying, if someone sadly was to get ill? So I don't know how you want to handle it. These are all questions. And again, I want to thank everyone for doing such a diligent job. This took a lot of work and obviously the parents of Wayne appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Dr. Burchard.
Ellen?
I'm Ellen Klein, 476 Terhune Drive. I'm also a Wayne teacher. So I'm guessing, Mrs. Reichman, if you can answer me, hi. What are the plans for fourth and fifth grade in respect to traveling? Will the teachers travel or will we be in safe, self-contained classes?
We'll answer questions at the end, ma'am.
Okay, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, is it me? I guess it's me.
Yep, you're ready.
Thank you. That's weird. I've not done this before. Eileen D'Amico, 29 Manor Drive. You know, I want to echo Mr. Tempesky. I thank everybody who's, all the committee people and administrators and so on who worked on all these committees. I can't even imagine the lift that this has been. I do have a bunch of questions. I'm going to try and mush them together and then I'll save the rest for the thought exchange, but just some things that if there is ability to answer tonight, might help clarify for some additional questions. The first thing is, I guess, when we're talking about, and it kind of goes to something Mr. Tempesky said, for the students who aren't physically in the building in class on their given day or days. And it sounded like we may be looking to pilot some sort of live stream learning via, I think, Mr. Burchard, Dr. Burchard said it was the Swivel. But you know, my hope would be that we would be ready to do more than pilot it and really be looking, I hope, in some sort of great lengths at some form of live stream or live feed. Because as effective as, you know, I'll say, I don't want to say it was ineffective, but I just feel the experience is better and more effective, obviously, when the kids are there in person. So if, as example, new material is taught on a given day, especially at the upper grade levels, but across the board. And if that student or a group of students are not in school on that day, the instruction of new material they're getting, does that mean that that is done virtually? Because to me, that's not near as effective as in-person, especially when you're dealing with new material. So definitely, you know, whatever opportunity we can to do some sort of live stream, live feed, so that really all the kids are getting live instruction every day. It's just not necessarily in-person instruction every day, you know, with the exception of the wellness days or whatever those are, of course. That would be the one thing. Then as far as, you know, again, specifically high school and especially the upperclassmen, you know, has thought been given to how this type of schedule impacts students in AP classes and what that looks like for end-of-year AP exams. And really dovetailing with that, with the schedule really being half-days. And I really understand the need for that, and of course, health of everybody is tantamount, but you're really in a half-day schedule and then the kids are in live instruction in person, one day every four at the high school level, three or four. You know, how is it possible to jam all the curriculum that they need, not just AP, but at every grade level, but especially the upper grade levels into really what's going to be half-days for the first half of the year, if not less? So, you know, I'm just trying to understand how it's possible to jam all that curriculum into that limited window of time and sort of what thought, what are the thoughts around that? I'm just looking, I guess, some other things that you mentioned, the sneeze shields and different things like that. I assume if those were implemented or if those are implemented, that's something that the district, I guess, would put in place in each of the schools? Or is that something that would kind of be an add-on or how would that work? I don't know. And I guess, I guess that's it. The other questions maybe are more clarity once I understand the answers to some of these. So I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. You're live, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. Hi, my name is Isabel Swellem. I'm a special needs parent and also the Waze CPAD president. First, I also want to thank you all for members and the members of the committee for working tirelessly on these plans. It was mentioned that special needs will attend four days a week. It was mentioned that special needs will attend four days a week. I assume that will be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. I just want to confirm whether they will also follow a shortened daily schedule, or will they follow a full-day schedule? And also wanted to ask about the students who have one-to-one pairs in the classroom. That will raise the number of people in the room, and how is that being modified? And in regards to transportation, will there be an option for parents to choose AM pickup only, or PM drop-off only, or both? And can we also possibly think about considering maybe doing flipped classroom models to allow more teacher interaction in schools? That can be something that could be taken into account. And I definitely do encourage more Board of Ed virtual meetings, as I heard you have over 1,000 parent attendees, which might even be a record. So congratulations on the attendance tonight, as well as all the hard effort and work that you put into this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello? Hi, my name is Ahmad Nahes. I live at 66 Armstrong Avenue. First of all, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to explain everything. I do have a couple of suggestions. One of them is, is it possible to have two shifts? One in the morning, one in the evening? And also, the days as the students are home, is it going to be like live instructions, like via Zoom? Or is it going to be similar to how it was prior to, you know, in the month of March and April, prior to summer? And that's it. Those are the two questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello? Hello, my name is Katie Cluck. I'm at 34 Hillcrest Drive. I'm a proud member of the Wayne Valley Class of 2020. And as proud as I am of the community we constantly build, the mascot at Wayne Valley has always been an issue. Myself and many of my peers will not buy any merchandise with the mascot on it. Wearing it can feel inappropriate. The American Psychological Association did research, and since 2005, they have condemned all Native American mascots as harmful. Hundreds of Native American organizations have condemned the mascot as offensive. We are a school, and we teach kids to listen to experts, and we choose to ignore them now on this particular issue. Native Americans have had their land stolen on unfathomable tragedy. Calling the Indian mascot "our tradition" ignores the fact that many traditions of Native Americans have been purposely and systematically destroyed. Traditions evolve as society does. It is wrong for us to use an entire group of people as a mascot. Wayne Valley can do better and deserves better.
Thank you. Next. You're live.
Yes, it's us. Hi, I have a question.
Well, state your name first and address, please.
Okay, hi, my name is Norma Montero, and I'm at 806 Valley Road. First, yes, thank you for doing this. It was very informative. My question is about siblings in the district, throughout the district. Will they be put in the same rotation? Like, is there a way, so if they're assigned to Monday, Tuesday, will all siblings, at least in the elementary and the middle schools, be put on that same schedule? I think that would probably make it a little bit easier for working parents to work something out. Right? And I think that's it. That's my question.
Okay, we'll entertain all questions at the end. Next.
Hi, this is Enrico Leo, 42 Camillo Drive.
Turn your volume down, please.
Sure, sir.
Thank you.
Sure, Enrico Leo, 40 Camillo Drive. Just a few questions. Well, first, just want to thank everybody for their, you know, the time and effort. I know this is a huge endeavor, so I just want to say thanks and appreciate all the effort. Just a few questions. The first one, on the high school schedule. I might have missed it, but the three cohorts, is it right that the Cohort C was virtual every day? Or was it, is that going to be like a rotating schedule, or is Cohort C going to be virtual full-time? If so, you know, it'd be nice if, you know, if the different cohorts had a balance of being virtual, you know, and in-person. So I might have missed that, but that's one question. Another, on the teacher accommodations. You know, how would that work if, you know, a teacher was accommodated being in virtual full-time because of their concerns for, you know, health and safety concerns? How would that work, you know, for the, you know, the students that, you know, need to have, obviously, an instructor in the classroom on those days? Just curious about that. Also, the tech platforms, different technology platforms would be, I would just encourage, like, the use of different platforms. I thought the teacher pass seemed really interesting, but maybe more of that, you know, and in particular, just sort of more live interaction between students and teachers? If that's possible. Fourth, just a question on the mask policy. Like, how would that work? Like, you know, I understand it will be tough for some students to be wearing masks all day. You know, how would that be enforced, if it would be enforced? You know, like, are there going to be consequences for students? Like, if they can't wear a mask all day, are there going to be, like, breaks during the day for that? And then lastly, just, you know, after-school activities, in particular at the high school level. You know, are those going to be resuming, you know, on a normal basis? What's, what if any adjustments to the after-school programs, clubs, activities, will there be? So, thank you.
Thank you. Great questions, everybody. Next.
Hi, this is Judy Bragman, 18 Pontiac Drive. I have been a lifelong member of Wayne Township. I am a graduate of Wayne Valley High School. I have no problem with the mascot, but that is not the reason I'm calling. I need a little more explanation and understanding from the CTA policy that it appears the Board of Ed has agreed to. There seems to be some confusion with parents, as well as myself, after listening to this. Is the Board of Ed paying the 50% difference? Or are they just guaranteeing that CTA does provide those parents that did not take the insurance with the difference? Parents did not cancel this trip. This was canceled by the township. And the reason parents did not take out insurance was if a child thought they might not take the trip. We were told, if you think you might not take the trip, you can take the insurance, and until your child steps on the bus that day, they will be refunded. So I did not cancel the trip, nor did any of the other parents that did not take the supplemental insurance. So we'd like to understand why it's a windfall for CTA. We want to confirm that this company will never be utilized by the township again. You know, there are towns that are suing them, Demerist for one, for $55,000. So I also have the question of if there were payments made on student behalfs for PTO, from the PTO. Who is getting that money back? Is it going back to the parent? Is it going back to the school? There does need to be more clarity on what your resolution was. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello, hi, my name is Valerie Foley. I'm at 143 Cheyenne Way. Thank you for taking my question. Will preschool, kindergarten, and first graders, I guess, second graders, be required to wear masks? And if they are required and cannot due to behavioral or health issues, because there are many health risks to wearing these masks, can they still be a part of the school and participate virtually? And will they be able to return to school if things return to normal, hopefully, at some point in the year? Or will they have to remain virtual? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Diane Lee from 16 Kimberly Place. I just wanted to comment on the issue of the Wayne Valley mascot. I understand that times are really difficult right now with the COVID-19 and, you know, China fix everything, going back to school. And along with, like, movements such as like the Black Lives Matter movement. But I think that this issue still needs to be addressed. The Black Lives Matter movement has opened our eyes to unfair treatment of others, and it has made us more aware, and I think that we should become more aware of our own community, too. And the few reasons that we keep this mascot, I think, are because of our attachment to it with the memories, the history, and the traditions. And honestly, I'm an upcoming senior, so I've only been in the school for three years. So I can't even fathom the, like, the deep memories that have been made based on this mascot. But I think that our fond memories still do not justify the stereotyping and degrading of a whole community. And sometimes I think we do need to let go of these things. The Native Americans in our community have blatantly stated that they do not feel honored by the mascot, and they wish for there to be a change. Many schools have changed their mascots, such as Stanford and Dartmouth. Dartmouth changed it from the Indians to the Big Green. And this shows that times are changing, society is changing, and we have to grow as well. And I think that as everything is changing around us, we can't stay stuck in the past, and that we need to grow as well, too. And as an athlete and part of the Wayne Valley Athletic Program, I know that it'll be very difficult to undergo this change, and that it'll leave a big impact. But I think that our Valley pride will still exist, because our pride is not based off of a mascot, but it's based off of the people and the bond that we have with each other and the spirit that we have. And so I think our pride can still exist, and even if this change may not come immediately, I hope that this is considered and that there will be a change eventually. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Leveen Madar, 23 Bolins Avenue. I want to speak up in support of changing the Wayne Valley mascot. The idea of having Native American mascots create a very stereotypical and negative view on their culture. You have all seen that mural in Wayne Valley of an indigenous person. You have seen students wearing headdresses and face paint at sports games. Native American culture is not our entertainment. Those subtle yet very powerful symbols of hatred and exclusiveness are completely against our goals listed at the meeting earlier. It's also against the No Place For Hate Initiative. The National Congress of American Indians has even reached out to the board. NCAI is one of the biggest Native American organizations. What are you going to do to properly address this? You very briefly mentioned it in the beginning of our meeting, but what are you actively doing? Mark Toback, you said, and I quote, "Our curriculum and many other aspects of our school district are far more inclusive and representative of our diverse population when compared to the past, and we strongly dispute mischaracterizations of our curriculum." I have to disagree. I find the depiction of the indigenous tribes as our mascot very inappropriate. Just because it's slightly better than the past, it does not mean that we're inclusive. As a predominantly white school in town, we should be listening to people of color, so we get rid of this internalized racism. A group of students has created a petition that has gotten great recognition. We have thousands of signatures and so many comments from Native Americans. Mark Toback, you need to do better.
Are you finished? Thank you. Still muted.
Hello?
Okay, you're live.
Oh. I just came in.
Sir? There's way too much noise in the background.
Okay, I'm sorry. I have just, if I, I ask if we can do like two shifts as the agent says, like, morning and afternoon, instead of day on and day off, and the continuous schedule could be better. We can start the areas, we can start the area, for example, from 7:30. And we have up to the airbrush BM, you can book like two shifts. And the, most of the students go in the morning and the afternoon. And in between, even you can have one hour.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, sir. It sounds like you're suggesting we have school till 8:00 PM and split up the classes. Is that what you're trying to say?
No, I'm saying to have two shifts instead of one.
Well, now he's muted. You have to unmute yourself, sir. Do you unmute, or do they, Dr. Bichard?
He did.
He muted himself?
Yes.
Okay, sir, well, we can't hear you. You muted yourself. Would you like to send us an email? We'll have to go to the next caller. Dr. Bichard? Okay, can you take the next person, please? I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you, but we'll definitely answer your questions via email. Next. You're live. Hello? Hello? Speak up, please.
Hi, my name is Alex Breck.
Okay.
I live at 80 Chestnut Drive. And I am a rising senior at Wayne Valley High School. And I would like to talk about the mascot that we have. And I think that it's very, very harmful. We just instituted a training for 30 students at Wayne Valley to be Anti-Defamation League peer mentors. And we are supposed to help combat hatred in our school. We are supposed to make it a safe place for everyone. We are supposed to help implement the No Place For Hate Initiative. And I feel like it's very hypocritical of us to say that we are creating a school that is safe for everyone while still operating under this outdated and very stereotypical, harmful mascot that does not accurately portray Native American culture, for one. And two, I don't think that we should have a mascot that is depicting of a race of people, of an ethnicity of people, especially one that has been oppressed and marginalized since the creation of this country. I think that for the people that think that this is honoring to our, to Native American culture, that this is something to be proud of, to have an "Indian mascot," full-on quote. I think that we should talk to, I think that the Board of Ed and Wayne Valley administration should reach out to the Lenape people of Ramapo, right here in New Jersey, because they are people who are being... because they are people who are being most influenced by our mascot. They're people who live in the same state as us and have to deal with our mascot as an entire high school. And I think that if they say that this is harmful and we don't like it, then we should change the mascot entirely to something else, like an animal, like a viper, whatever. And if they say that, no, it is honoring, and perhaps maybe they want to change some things about it to create a more accurate symbol, I think we should do that. You could look at the Florida State University Seminoles. And they worked with the Seminole people of Tallahassee to create one that, a symbol that was more accurate. It was culturally accurate. And that still wasn't, it didn't go over well with the Seminole people of, in Oklahoma. But that's another point. I think we should talk to the Ramapo, the Lenape and Ramapo. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello? Good evening. My name is Ed Snarls, 56 Potrohorn Drive. I want to begin by extending my appreciation for all your work. As a school administrator in another district, I know how heavy of a lift this is and how fluid the situation is. So again, your efforts are greatly appreciated. My comments really are more or less in terms of the structure of the virtual piece. If I'm looking, I have a child in the elementary school and one going into the high school. So I guess I'm trying to visualize my day as an elementary school as an incoming fifth grader on my virtual days. If my teacher's teaching in the classroom with the in-person, what does my day look like until the end of the day that my teacher's available? And then what does that look like when my teacher is available? I know there's, I'm sure, there's a lot of PD and training going on when we talk about synchronous and asynchronous instruction, live and not live. But I think we've learned from the spring, we kind of had to pivot and teach us how to learn on the fly. So we understand that, you know, it was a work in progress. But as we're now moving into a more robust setting, I think it's important that the consistency of interaction, feedback, conferencing, the things that normally would happen in a classroom in live instruction, that we try to make sure that kind of interaction is built into the virtual setting. Because I'm just thinking of my 10-year-old. Until 1:45 or whatnot, that my teacher's ready for me, what does my day look like? And at the high school, very similar question. The way I understood, and I could be wrong, if there are three cohorts, I'm in one week, I'm out two weeks. And if that's the case, as a high school freshman, what does my two weeks of virtual experiences look like? I was under the impression the swivel wasn't live. It was recorded so kids can watch pre-recorded lessons. So again, when we get into the feedback, the interaction, the question and answer, if my teacher's teaching, do I get that kind of interaction at the virtual setting? Those are really my questions in regards to just what virtual looks like, how robust is it going to be? I know there's a commitment to improving, and I do appreciate all your efforts. Thank you for your time.
Okay, at this time, I just want to interrupt for a moment because I did a little math. We have 38 more hands raised. Times five minutes is another three hours of questions. So in fairness to our staff and attendees and board members who want to get home before midnight, I'd like to at least reduce that to three minutes. If I could get a consensus from the board on that. Does anyone object to at least making a shorter time period or asking if people don't repeat comments or questions going forward? Is there any objection to reducing it to three minutes?
No.
No.
All right, do I need to move that, Mr. Moffett?
I do believe that's your prerogative as the president. I do believe you have the.
Well, I think I'm going to invoke that. So I think three minutes is enough to get a point across. So if we could just check the time going forward to three minutes, and we'll take our next question. Thank you so much. You can still reach us by email and through our, obviously, our survey, et cetera, if you can't get it all in in three minutes. You're up, sir.
Yes, George Pelaggio, 295 Rats Road. Just a quick note on, oh, thank you very much for all your efforts in putting together this protection for our children and handling all the moving parts that are challenged. But real quick on the Native American mascot. I am a Native American. I don't find that offensive at all. I think it's a celebration of a culture that is almost forgotten and there was no knowledge that could be shared out there. And there's less and less, more and more each day. So I see it as a celebration and a good thing to have a Native American as a mascot for teams of competition. But my real question is, I did not, unless I missed it, I did not see any testing protocol. How feasible is that to have that in place so that we can quell some of the concerns about, you know, the transmission of this COVID disease? You know, and I'd like to see if that would perhaps confirm the data that's coming in from Europe, in Switzerland, Sweden, all of UK, Ireland, and Germany, that there is, that children pose a very, very significant low transmission of the disease. So if we could have some kind of protocol in place for testing, I think that would really help to help put this to rest or minimize the panic. That's my main question.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, Pedro Fuentes, 83 Newark-Pompton Turnpike. Just a question is, with sports involved in this, I know we're trying to social distance at the school, but I know that the sports are going on now. So how is this going to be effective with the fall and winter sports? I mean, if we're trying to social distance at the school, how is it possible that we're doing sports right now? So I don't know if you guys really make that call or not, but I'm just curious to see, you know, what the thought process is on allowing our kids to play sports right now when we're supposed to be socially distanced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Thank you for keeping it short.
Hi, Todd Crawford, 34 Manchester Court. My question is about having an elementary kid and what's it going to look like for first grade? Maybe I missed it. First and foremost, you all did a great job. But how are you going to improve your technology platforms from last year? And, you know, compared to some other school districts we've seen from other colleagues and friends, they have pledged allegiance via Zoom or any other technology platforms, and well as the teachers checking in, how are you guys going to handle that in the fall? So that's just my question in general. And that is just it.
Thank you. Next. You're live. Hello? Now you're muted. Are you there? Can't hear you. Okay, move on to the next one, Mr. Bishard. Clearly having audio problem. Are they muted themselves? Okay, go ahead. You're live. Yes, you're live.
Hi, my name is Melissa Garrido, 154 Beechwood Drive in Wayne, New Jersey. My question is, and if I'm understanding it correctly, the cohort will follow the block schedules. So would that be like two days on and two days off for the high school students? And if they are, you know, how do you account for safety when it comes to bullying in school? How many people are going to be in school? And would they, you know, safely monitor the students who are in the school at one point? And going to the bathroom? You know, I know we're supposed to be masking kids up, but would they be monitored if they want to go to the bathroom? And lastly, when they go to school, would there be any temperature checks prior to the start of school? And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Next.
Hello? Okay, Cindy Simon, 1444 Rats Road. Very quickly, extracurricular activities are really important for a variety of reasons, especially at the high school level. If they can't be done in person, please give consideration to figuring out a way to do it virtually. And my other question, which I'm not even really sure how to ask, is with the needs to cohort in a high school, is that have the possibility of impacting students' individual schedules in terms of the classes they've requested? And if it does, will there be some kind of attempt to deal with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Melanie Williams, 68 Carroll Place. I have a rising senior and rising fifth grader. Just asking for clarity on the high school model. I think on the slide where Dr. Toback described how it would go, it wasn't as clear as the other grade levels. So if a student is in, say, Cohort A, it appeared that that child would be in school face-to-face four days a week while the other two cohorts are virtual. Is that the case in three-week intervals or in two-week intervals? We just need a little bit of clarity on that because I heard three weeks and then I also heard two weeks, but it wasn't actually written on the slide. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next. You're live.
Hi, this is David Ginsberg, 2 Amy Way. Thanks for all the work you guys have done. Really appreciate it. It's a great job. Just a few quick questions. Does the district look at a weekly schedule? For example, where Cohort A would go in person the full one week and then the next week fully virtual, swapping, of course, with Cohort B? We have children in elementary school. Just asking that as, you know, having one full week in school and then one week virtually might be a little easier on working parents versus having to try to find coverage, maybe like one or two days a week. Looking at it full week might be a little easier. So the district look at that. The second question is, in the schedule that you have laid out, again, for elementary school kids we have, will the parents have any say in which day their children are in person in school? I.e., can you self-select Monday, Tuesday, or the Thursday, Friday? Again, trying to help accommodate working parents. Is that something the school district is open to? And our last question is for on-the-go lunch, just a little clarity. Will that be the kids pick it up and then eat it in their classrooms? Or is the idea they're going to pick it up and then they would eat it when they get home? And if we have money left in our lunch accounts at school, does that just stay in the account and get rolled over to whenever we're able to use it again? Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're live.
Oh, hi, Jamie Lilis, 70 Grandi Wine Road. I just have a few questions. Has it been deemed safe for bus drivers to wear a mask while we're driving the hot buses? Who will be enforcing on the buses that the kids are actually wearing their masks? And I think if I heard right, their buses were being cleaned one day a week. If the buses are shared between the three schools, how are they not being cleaned in between each route? Okay, that's my buses. For middle school and high school, will the kids be changing in the locker rooms for gym? As for the screening app, many parents have issues with any sort of app that tracks data with regards to their children. So how is that app going to be working? Assuming this plan goes through, will high school juniors and seniors be able to drop their AP classes now since they will only have half-day instruction for the first half of the year? And my last question is, is there a plan to return the Board of Ed meetings to in-person in the near future with proper distancing protocol, masks, and such? If we're looking to send the teachers and kids back to school, these meetings will be in-person as well? That's it. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, this is Erica Smith, 177 Oldham Road. So my son is supposed to go into kindergarten in the fall. And if I understood correctly, he would be most likely two days a week for part of the day because the Krap program is now in question. So really, he would literally only be in school for a couple hours twice a week. Because right now he's in preschool and that's currently open all week. He wears a mask from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM every day. So then, would it be better to keep him in preschool at a preschool three level, almost kindergarten teacher? If we did that, could he go back to regular kindergarten if school resumed a regular schedule midway through the year? And if he stayed in the preschool three, could he go straight to first grade next year? So that is my question.
Okay, next.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, my name is Scott. I live in Wayne. So my first question is, as far as breaking up the groups of schools to A versus B, are you going to keep into consideration siblings? In other words, will you, if we have two kids, one in second grade, one in first grade, are you going to skip, you know, put one in Group A, one in Group B? That's my first question, and I hope you don't. I hope you combine siblings. I really hope you can take that into consideration. Number two, as far as money. You know, a lot of parents both work. And because of this, one of them might have to quit their jobs or even be furloughed or laid off. Is there any talk about money back to the parents that are teaching their kids three days a week? Has Brigano even spoken about this? Third, as far as mascots, to any of the high school girls that just called in, I asked, do they know any Native Americans? And I support fully that Native American man that called in. I support the Wayne Valley Indians. Number four, Dawn, whatever pizza you were eating, it looked delicious. I would love to know where that's from. If you could send me a text or an email where it's from, it looked delicious. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melody Appel from 92 Chestnut Drive. I'd like to express my support in changing the Wayne Valley's mascot of the Indians. I'm ashamed that in a town that seemed to be highly supportive of progressive change through the Black Lives Matter movement, there is such intense pushback in this change. There's clearly a cultural disconnect in Wayne. How dare people read testimonials from Native Americans on social media agreeing with its racist ties and then disregard their words in order to hold tradition? Native American activist Funky Echo Hawk commented on Instagram how it is tone-deaf, to say the least, to say home of the Indians when the school is built on stolen land. Then, 87% of state history standards don't even mention the Native American history past 1900. I've learned that your students call your football field the TP, the newsletter, the smoke signals, and that you tell your athletic opponents to fear the spear. He then continued to say, "If your school's history standards align with national statistics, it's safe to assume that you're not teaching your students inaccurate, complete, or even inclusive history. Native American history is American history." Thank you, Brian Borcherd, for sharing this comment, and I could not agree more. If students were well-informed on history, this discussion would not be controversial because, quite frankly, it should not be. According to the National Congress of American Indians website, as documented in a comprehensive review of decades of social science research, derogatory Indian sports mascots have serious psychological, social, and cultural consequences for Native Americans, especially Native youth. Of today's American Indian and Alaska Native population, those under the age of 18 make up 32%, and Native youth under the age of 24 represent nearly half, or 42%, of the entire Native population. It's interesting how the same Wayne residents support racial inclusivity, denounce Native Americans by wishing to keep the Indian mascot. But of course, this doesn't matter to them since Wayne is a predominantly white town. So it's a rarity to hear perspectives from Native peoples. Wayne is trailing behind in the world when it comes to. Wayne is trailing behind in the world when it comes to implementing social change and fighting racism, and it shows in the demographics and practices of our schools. Many universities, for example, have changed their mascots, including Stanford University from Indians to Cardinals in nineteen seventy-two, Moncler State University, only twenty minutes away from us, from Indians to Red Hawks in nineteen eighty-nine, and then, of course, Washington's NFL team, the Redskins, in twenty-twenty. The Wayne Valley Indians are no different than any of these schools. It's important to mention that Valley pride can easily be kept after replacing our offensive mascot. Valley students are so motivated to implement this change that they have offered their talents to draw a new mascot. It is imperative that we change this mascot to truly implement the change that will affect future future generations, especially if you plan on staying in or around Wayne. Native Americans are people and their lives and history is valid and not your mascot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Eric Freed. I live at forty Marlow Road in Wayne. Um this is regarding the Wayne Valley Indian mascot. Um there's been a lot of uh people against it um on this on this meeting today. Um and uh you know, I understand everyone has an opinion. To me, the most important opinion is the gentleman that identified himself as a Native American. He just said it a few minutes ago, he is not offended. I I agree that there is a racism issue in the world today and that needs to be addressed. In my opinion, I don't believe that the Wayne Valley Indian is used in a negative, derogatory, cartoonish, um racist way. The fact of the matter is, American Indians did exist in this area. They refer to themselves as Indians. Uh I I have three kids, two of which have been involved in 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 many sports at Wayne Valley. They're proud to call themselves Indians. They they are. It's the traditions I believe should be. Let me back up. I believe the kids should be educated on the Indians more as opposed to eradicating that it ever existed. American Indians existed here. Let's educate, let's not eradicate. The the field or the snack stand has never, ever, ever been referred to as a TP. I don't even know where that came from. Um I've been around Wayne Valley for six years now. I'm sorry, seven years. And it's never been referred to as the TP. Um I I we, there are two, there are two petitions going around, one against the Indian, which does have a lot of signatures, but at least forty percent of those signatures have no one from Wayne. I I think Joe Biden signed it. I know he has no interest in the Wayne Valley Indians. Um the the other petition for keeping the Indian has roughly twenty-two hundred, twenty-five hundred signatures. Two thousand of them are Wayne residents, five hundred of them are alumni of Wayne Valley. Those opinions matter more than people who do not live in the town, at least to me. Um once again, the the uh the NCAI, which was referred to, the I stands for Indian. The NEIA, the I stands for Indian. They refer to themselves as Indians. We're not making fun of them. We're not using a cartoonish caricature. It's a symbol of pride. Educate, don't eradicate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, um this is Melanie Van Damme. I'm thirty-nine Woodstock Drive. Um I have two questions. Um first of all, thank you for all your hard work. I know this hasn't been easy for anyone. Um two questions is, one, um when will we be finding out what cohort our child is in? For those of us that are working parents, we need to find out sooner rather than later in order to try to figure out extra help. And um also, two, um will the learning that they be doing for distance learning be live? Or will it be something that somebody can help them in later in the day? So will it be the same schedule as the school schedule? Or will it be something that's taped and they could do it at any point during the day? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, uh my name is Amanda Heel. Um I'm a resident of eleven Alma Deere Drive and I'm going to be a senior at Wayne Valley this fall. And about a month ago, uh I created the online petition called Change the Wayne Valley Mascot, in which I explained the negative effects of the mascot. Um and since it was uploaded, it's gained over six thousand three hundred signatures from people of diverse backgrounds, including current students, graduated students, parents, previous Wayne Valley teachers, other community members, as well as Native Americans who don't agree with the way that we represent their race. Um and for anyone who's curious about the negative effects of Native American mascots, there's an abundance of resources online that can easily be searched for. So I want to say that the issue with the mascot isn't new and people have been calling to change the Indian mascot for decades. I've received messages from alumni who created and signed petitions in the nineties and two thousands and I've received messages from people who have tried to bring, tried to bring this issue to light for so long. Um it's easy to ignore or deny the existence of racism if it doesn't harm you, even though it's the wrong thing to do. And there's a counter petition going around in our town and it can only be signed by Wayne residents and people who've lived in Wayne. And the opinion of our townspeople is so important because this mascot represents our community, but it represents an entire race of about five million two hundred twenty-one thousand people in the United States. So yes, we should discuss this as a community, but we must take into consideration the opinion of Native Americans. And it's not solely the right of our ninety percent white town to decide what's acceptable and what's not. And so um as for Native Americans around Wayne, um I think Alex mentioned earlier, the Leni Lenape Tribe, which is the largest Native American tribe in New Jersey. Um their official website says, even though some are said to be in an effort to honor our people, most mascots are insulting and racist and all reinforce insensitivity and stereotypes. Often, our children must visit or attend schools where their race is being caricatured on walls, shirts, jackets, and flags. Our proud tribal names, villages, heroes, and even rituals are turned into marketing tools and demeaned. Sadly, it has been our experience that when we try to educate such offenders, we are verbally and sometimes even physically attacked. Having so such mascots is no honor and it is an insult. Um also recently, then the National Congress of American Indians directly reached out to the Wayne Board of Ed um to express their desire to have the Wayne Valley Indians changed. Uh the National Congress of American Indians is the oldest, largest, and most representative national organization representing tribal nations and people. And their letter addressed to the Wayne BOE says, "The use of Native American sports mascots, logos, or symbols perpetuate stereotypes of American Indians that are very harmful. The warrior savage myth has played us country's relationship with the Indian people as it reinforces the racist views that Indians are uncivilized and uneducated, as it has been used to justify policies of forced assimilation and destruction of Indian culture." And I think that we must listen to the Leni Lenape Tribe and NCAI. And over the past few weeks, a lot of progress has been made both nationally and in New Jersey. Um Pascak Valley and Pascak Hills here in New Jersey decided to change their Indians cowboy mascots as well as the NFL team in Washington that uses derogatory term uh to describe Native Americans as the mascot. Um and Wayne is not an exception and we have to follow. And I want to thank the Board of Ed for their promise to eliminate racism in our schools. As a student in Wayne for twelve years, it really means a lot to know that the students of colors voices are finally being heard, so thank you. But um we can't brush off this issue and the first step is admitting that the mascot is wrong um and stop to stop actively promoting it as a mascot. Um and again, this isn't a new problem. People have been trying to remove it for decades and I can't, it it can't wait longer. Um I do have faith in our community. I do believe that if the district is really dedicated to eliminating racism and creating a better environment for their students, we'll see a change in the Wayne Valley mascot very soon. And I'm proud to be a Wayne Valley student and a member of the Wayne community, but I'm not proud to call myself an Indian. Um being an Indian might represent things like pride, strength, and togetherness, but so can countless other mascots and it might be hard.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I've, you've gone over your time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We heard your uh loud and clear. Next.
Hello?
Go ahead, you're live.
Hi, I'm Haley Budnick, thirty-eight Clinton Lane. To start plain and simple, the Wayne Valley Indian mascot is racist. Goal one, diversity, equity, and inclusion can in no way be accomplished while this mascot still stands. I am a two thousand eighteen Valley graduate. Not once did I feel so connected to our mascot. None of my friends talked about their love for the mascot and I never heard any of my peers mention their dedication to it either, unless it was discussed how inappropriate and uncomfortable it made some of us feel. I now live in Washington DC and I currently work at the American Psychological Association. I would like to quickly quote one of their articles titled "Summary of the APA Resolution Recommending Retirement of American Indian Mascots." They write that these mascots, quote, "Undermine the educational experiences of members of all communities, especially those who have had little or no contact with indigenous peoples. The symbols, images, and mascots teach non-Indian children that it's acceptable to participate in culturally abusive behavior and perpetuate inaccurate misconceptions about American Indian culture and establishes an unwelcome and oftentimes hostile learning environment for American Indian students that affirms negative images slash stereotypes that are promoted in mainstream society. It should be no surprise that people are ready to speak out against this monstrosity that has been the face of our school that is seventy-eight point six percent white, may I add. I would also like to acknowledge those who so strongly oppose changing the mascot because it honors the Native American community. I hope you are all naming and praying every day for the indigenous women that have been going missing in our country every day. You do not get to cherry pick what you fight for. Do the right thing and change the Wayne Valley Indian mascot. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello?
You're on.
Hi, my name is Timothy Thompson, um one three Lawi Avenue. I graduated from Wayne Valley in two thousand nineteen. First, I want to say thank you for taking steps to address racism. Um by doing this, you are making this town safer for all, regardless of race or identity. But there's still a lot of work to do. And though we are taking steps in the right direction, I hope the board will continue to advocate for protection, awareness, and education for our minorities. But today, I want to talk about the Valley mascot. A petition was created that now has over six thousand signatures. And I also agree that it's time for change. These harmful mascots have been denounced by the American Psychological Association, the National Collegiate Athletics Association, the Cherokee Nation of Oklahoma, the Seminole Nation of Oklahoma, and the National Congress of American Indians, among other organizations, sports teams, and world leaders. America's history of Native American oppression stems back to the very founding of this country. We all know about the genocide and the displacement of col- just displacement by colonists and the Trail of Tears that wiped out eighty percent of natives. But just to give you a sense of how insidious these caricatures are and something we didn't learn about in school, the US used the savage narrative to justify the forced stealing of tens of thousands of Native American children in an attempt to, quote, "civilize" them with an institution that lasted from eighteen seventy-nine to the nineteen seventies. This started with the Carlisle Indian Industrial School where Native Amer- where Native American children were stripped of their identities, abused verbally, sexually, and physically, forced into manual labor, neglected and starved. Their motto was, quote, "Kill the Indian and save the man." Similarly, similarly, in nineteen fifty-eight, the US forcefully stole one-fourth of the Native child population to give up for adoption to white families in order to break apart Native families. This was all under the pretense that Native parents were unfit to raise their children and were savages. The pleas to change these inaccurate and stereotypical representations are coming from generations of Native families, some still living today, who know what it is like to have those insensitive biases used as justification for further displacement, mistreatment, and the breaking of their families. As Barbara Moon Sun, a member of the Oneida Nation of Wisconsin, says, "Stereotypes, ignorance, silent inaction, and even naive innocence damage and destroy individual lives and whole cultures. Racism kills. Help teach tolerance, not stereotypes, to make Wayne more welcoming for others. It is time for Wayne to follow the rest of the world in fighting for racial justice. First by retiring the mascot, second by properly educating the community on minorities. The Wayne education system is a big reason why people move here, but it's also no secret that Wayne has a tolerance problem. I've seen it, I've heard it, and I've lived it as a black African American. And in this moment of racial awakening, Wayne's school legacy is on the line. Please consider what you want to be remembered for. Thank you."
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Marissa Budnick. I'm at thirty-eight Clinton Lane. The Wayne Valley mascot is no honor to the indigenous people. It is an embarrassment to our Wayne community that we feel the need to inaccurately appropriate their culture when they have gone through so much as a people. When our overwhelmingly white school decides to eat at a snack stand called the TP and read from the school newspaper called the Smoke Signals, I've been in contact with the individual who runs the Keep the Indians Instagram account and their biggest argument is that they are, quote unquote, honoring Native people with this mascot. I and many people have sent several Native activists who denounced this mascot their way, where we shouldn't even have to. Native people don't need to explain themselves as to why they don't like their culture being appropriated. We shouldn't have to be, we shouldn't have been one of the many schools who had to do this in the first place. So why not right our wrong now in twenty-twenty? If the Keep the Indians Instagram account wants to honor indigenous people, they can donate money to the Navajo Nation, who are disproportionately affected by COVID-nineteen. They do not have access to clean water or grocery stores, which are essential in this time. Donate to them if you really want to honor them. Anyway, Pascak Valley changed their mascot. That Washington football team recent, very recently changed their mascot. And the only reason they did that was because FedEx was their biggest sponsor and threatened to drop them if they didn't, which is an issue of itself, but they did it. And if the problem here is money, it shouldn't be. If you saw on moral grounds, you would care about respecting a nation than about the money it would cost to replace everything. If we are honoring Native Americans here, we would simply respect them and their wishes. So so much money already goes into the sports programs and not the arts or music programs. So what would be the difference of spending some money to do the right thing, right? Mr. Freed, who spoke or who spoke before, said, "Educate, not eradicate." So why don't we educate on the real and accurate history on indigenous people in the classroom and eradicate the stereotypical caricature caricature that is this mascot? And this brings me to diversifying the curriculum. As I stated stated in last month's Board of Ed meeting, I've learned more about BIPOC history and culture in these last two months than I did in the Wayne Public School system. I learned of the injustices of this American system toward people of color more in these two months than I did in the Wayne Public School system. I only had one black teacher, Mrs. Shawn, the school nurse at James Fallon Elementary. You must incorporate more black, indigenous, Latinx, Asian, LGBT accurate history and literature in your curriculum. You owe it to those students who are within those groups who will maybe feel a bit more accepted within their schools and in their bodies while they are also learning about who they are. You owe it to the white students who can either grow up ignorant to these injustices and histories or will grow up and have to teach themselves what was not taught in schools. Goal one, diversity, equity, and inclusion cannot be complete until the mascot is changed and BIPOC and LGBT history and literature are put into the curriculum.
That's your time, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, this is Augie de Blake from fifty-two Princeton Place. I just had a couple of questions on middle school, basically, for going back to school. Uh first one is, when the middle school kids have their cohorts, will it be taken into account the different classes they'll be traveling amongst? So I, in other words, if the cohort is together, will they be traveling to the same classes together? Or will there have to be some sort of breaking up and intermixing between the cohorts to get to the right classes? Uh number two, um if my daughter, you know, chooses to to go to school, which she wants to do, and for whatever reason we decide days, weeks, month into it, that it's not right for her, she doesn't enjoy it, she doesn't want to continue doing it, is it okay to, you know, basically change your mind and bring her back home to do the at-home instruction? Uh that's just my two questions for your frequently asked files question and uh thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. To my suggestion, we should do a frequently asked questions, Dr. Dobek.
Hello, it's Ellen Klein again. I have two more teacher questions and I'm sorry, I don't know if this will be addressed in the near future or not, but will there be specials following their original curriculum? Or will they just be coverage as prep periods for teachers? And the expectation of the AM instruction versus the PM virtual expression be the same learning? So like what we teach in the AM to our class, is that what we will be teaching to our PM through virtual? Or will there be something different? Thank you. And I thank you all. I'm on one of your subcommittees and I really thank you a hundred percent for all the time and effort you've put into us going back to school. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Hello? Hi, how's it going? Uh I'm Ryan.
I'm Ryan Howe. I live at 10 Daly Avenue. And my son would be starting kindergarten at Lafayette. I kind of came in halfway through. I was curious if it was an option to just strictly do virtual? If that was an option, if that is an option, I'm all for that. You know, I would have no problem helping him learn and doing my best to teach him as best as I possibly could. And I just want to thank you all for your patience. Thank you all for your effort. I think you guys are doing a great job. And that's basically it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hello?
Hello, you're on.
Hi, how are you? My name is Michelle DeScano. I'm at 15 Kimberly Place. I think I speak mostly on the elementary level. I have a son going into first grade. A daughter finishing up her last year of preschool through a private school. I just have a couple of questions about drop-off and pickup. I think I speak for the whole 1 through 5 grade. Will there be different times? Will there be different pickup-drop off times? Will there be temperature checks? During that time, who will be staying by our children to watch them? I'm sure there'll be a line. As far as nurse visits go, because you know that always happens, and bathroom visits, who will be bringing them to and forth? Lunch, will that be something that's at their desk? How will their desk look? Is it completely open? Are they required to wear their mask the whole entire time? You're talking about six hours that a child, a young child, is required to wear a mask? If they're still socially distant, do they have to wear a mask? Or is that a parent's choice? As far as the grab and go lunch, is that something that they're going to eat at the school? Or is it, you know, you're talking about a young child where you're saying at 8:30, let's say, is the drop-off, and 1:45 is pickup. You're talking about a great length of time where they're going to be hungry and cranky. That's the bottom line, you know, any grade through 5th. Will it be the same rotation? Whether it be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday each week? Is it going to be rotating week to week, every third week? And what happens after Thanksgiving? I know you guys have a plan till basically Thanksgiving break. Is it just going to be like, you know, let's see what happens? And not, non-offensive, I'm just finding it very strange how, I'm a nurse myself, how you guys are all on Zoom, not in front of each other, but how come these kids filled in a classroom that is enclosed? Is it going to be okay to be in an enclosed environment in another five weeks? What's the difference from now until then?
Ma'am, thank you. That's your time, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you so much. Really be a nice help too.
You're on.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Jennifer Bach, 207 Andover Drive. I just have three quick questions for you guys. One is in regards to the extended day. Will the kids remain with the cohorts that they spent the day with? Or will they be mixed into a different group? My second question would be in terms of if a parent happens to get quarantined from their job, therefore I would think our kids would have to stay home. And then what does that do to their cohort? How does that spread? Is kind of where I'm going there. And then my last question, which I think was brought up a little bit earlier, was basically about specials, art, gym, bands, library, and the whole pass/fail thing that we just went through. Is that going to continue? That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah, hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, this is Norman Flight, 11 Falcon Place. My question, my kids are going into high school, and I'm curious, I understand the cohorts for the kids, but I'm wondering if there are cohorts for the teachers or administrators in the event that a case were to be, were to take place in the school, how would that affect the staff coverage? In the event that staff members had to be quarantined? And what would that do to the whole virtual versus in-person model? You know, if you wind up having to reduce staff based on people getting infected? That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Suggestion is that we're getting a lot of questions. And I think that basically if there's, to go through these questions that we already have, I think that would resolve a lot of other people's questions because some of them are similar, there's a number that were similar. So if we were to answer the questions now, like I said, that would address a number of other speakers who may be looking to speak in the near future. And there are some elements of questions that could be resolved with one explanation.
Well, I was going to suggest at the end, I've asked people not to repeat questions, but some people are coming on late. The number, it ebbs and flows with the attendees. And since this is a public meeting, I don't want to stop anyone from speaking entirely. But we don't have to answer the questions this evening. I would recommend that we do this in an online FAQ.
We have answers to all of them.
Right, but we can put them online for everyone to hear the answers or read the answers going forward along with the presentation. And take care of that between, you know, now and when we start the thought exchange. How do you feel about that?
I can answer the questions, but if, like I said, I could also wait. Just, I know that there's a normal process, but I thought.
We still have 22 people on with their hands up right now.
Sounds good.
So I'd like to finish that up because we said we would. We cut it down to three minutes. And again, if you heard a question already asked, obviously don't repeat it. And repeating anything at this point is just going to make us take longer. We can answer the questions tonight, but we'll discuss that later on. So the next person, please.
Hi, my name's Susan, 51 Agawam Drive. I have a question regarding, if a family member comes down with the virus, should you be reaching out to the school to let them know for the people that are around the child that there is the virus within that house? Because potentially, you know, where, you know, somebody's kids are asymptomatic. So I'd like to find that question. And then I'd like to find out if I were to keep my child home. Well, the first question was on, you're saying that on Wednesday you're going to clean. Is the day for cleaning? Now, on the days that these high school kids are in school and they're rotating classes, are those desks being wiped down? Are they being cleaned at all so that you don't know, again, if a child's asymptomatic? That's a question. And as well, in the spring, I know my child's teachers really, there was no Zooming while some teachers did do Zoom. And we didn't fare too well with that. And it took quite a while to hear back from teachers. So will there be a more acknowledgement or live teaching? I know you said the teachers potentially would be wearing this microphone and, you know. So I just want to know, will it be live so that my child does not fall behind? And will the teachers, how I know in the past, they have extra help, where you can go throughout the day during their off periods, how it was during that lunch hour, which I know you're not going to have, will there be, will the teachers still be there for the children if they need help? And that's pretty much what my questions are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, Dawn Savinsky, Powderhorn Drive. What considerations are being made for resource students at the elementary level in terms of scheduling? And also, as an option, would it be feasible for resource students, especially those with therapies, to have more face-to-face time? You know, like the self-contained students, like maybe three days versus two? Of course, as an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Hi, this is EB, Wenting, 7 Seminole. Thank you for your time tonight. A lot of the questions I had were already asked. But my one is IEP. So in the past, virtual learning experience, I have three kids in the systems, and they didn't do so well. All kids' grades dropped drastically, at least by two. One of which has an IEP. And I felt that there was no support provided for the IEP student where he had in-class help. So I'm wondering, how will that be handled? That's my one question. And my one comment is, we in our household 100% support the mascot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello, hi, my name is Chris. I live on Timothy Road. I had a question or I guess just comment on the New Jersey Health Guidelines, that if a student or a staff member had a fever, that they would stay home for a minimum of 10 days, and then 72 hours after that, fever-free? So just like, I guess, does the district have a plan for losing a teacher for 10-plus days? If either they have a fever or a student or a child of theirs has a fever? I know that if a negative test does come back, that they could be relieved of staying home for that long. But with testing taking longer these days, that could be a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next. You're on. Hello?
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 Yes.
Yeah, hi, do you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. Yeah. First, I'd like to thank Wayne Schools for all your hard work, very proud of what you guys have been doing.
Can you state your name first? Ma'am, can you state your name first?
Yeah. Oh yeah, I'm Jessica.
I'm sorry?
I'm 44. I'm Jessica from Lundy Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. First, I'd like to thank Wayne Schools for all your hard work, very proud of what you guys have been doing. And it is such a situation we are in right now. I truly believe that whatever decisions you guys pick for, are for the sake of their children. And I trust my kids with you guys. That is why I chose Wayne. Truly lucky, and you know, not all schools can provide phone books to all kids. And that's the first thing. And I actually have three kids in the system, elementary, middle school, and high school. And my questions are, first one, because they have a middle school that uses a school bus, and just want to ask if there will be like hand sanitizers, like available in the school buses? And second, I just want to ask if the staff will be like symptom surveillance for COVID? Like the staff, will they check the temperature? Or like symptoms of like cough, cough, you know, runny nose or something like COVID symptoms for all the teachers, like techs? Or, you know, like anybody in the school system staff? And then second one, the second question, the third question is, will the kid's temperature also be checked daily before coming into school? And fourth question, because, you know, some parents are, you know, working parents like us, will there be like recorded instructions? Because it's like been kind of crazy for the last, you know, online learning. So just in case the parents don't understand the topic, can we just go back and listen to the recorded instructions? And then the fifth question is, the three cohorts, because I also have, like I have a high school. And I'm like, I didn't quite understand it. Is it one week live classes and then two weeks online? And then for high school, will there be extra help? Or like, I know there are like remind apps that parents can sign up. But can there also be like a daily email reminder if like the child misses the homework or a schoolwork or something? Because like I work and then my husband works, so you know, it's kind of crazy. And like for, like us with like a elementary, middle, and high school, I know it's been asked, but can they be on the same like schedule on Monday, Tuesday? Kind of like live learning classes? Or like, yeah, live learning classes? And second, I just want to like comment on like the, whatever these kids are talking about. I don't mean to be mean, but you know, this meeting is for the 2021 plan. But you know, these topics, like the mascots, can be discussed on other times. It's just so unfair because, you know, I saved this day, saved this night to listen to this and kind of like a waste of time for working parents like us. So like, if these kids can be just like, kept these questions to, like, you know, save it for a different day and time, you know, that's all. But I'm really proud of what you guys are doing here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Albert Dimir, 31 Houberton Road. We have a twins that were supposed to start to first grade in Tunis Day. And I would like to know what is the plan for twins, siblings? As they want to stay together most of the time. And since we are not going to use the bus, we're going to drop them off and pick them up. We would prefer to have them going into school in same time and same day. And in terms of, the other thing is, hand sanitizing usage in the school. Is it going to be everywhere, like the hallway in the class? Each time they enter the class or they go to bathroom after bathroom? They're going to have station for hand sanitizing or not? That's all. Thank you very much for your time and all the hard work.
Thank you. Next. You're on. Hello? Anyone there? Next.
Hello?
You're on.
Hey. I'm going to make this as brief as possible. I got a lot of questions. My name is Katie Scheit. I'm at 11 Shore Road. I have my son going into second grade and my daughter going into fifth grade at Pines Lake. I just want to make sure that the... First question is, is the union consulted on all of this? Is this all going to change after the teachers get, take a look at this and say, okay, this isn't going to work? This isn't going to work? Have you considered delaying the school year at all? I don't know how that works with the state regulations and how many days we have to put in. Have you considered at some point during the school year, a two-week break? Just to make sure everybody's healthy and kind of time to reset? I have a question about siblings sitting together on the bus? Because I know we have to distance, but can siblings sit together? And that, how does that affect the plan for the busing? And then also, I don't want to repeat anything, but the cleaning situation with the buses is frightening. Is new academic content being introduced? If you have a child on the A schedule and they're online learning for the B schedule, is that content repeated? Or is that new content? I don't know if that makes, if that question makes sense, but hopefully Kathy will translate.
Wait, me?
Kathy, I'll email you, Kathy. Online only, if you decide you want to do an online-only option for your children, can you join the school year late? Or once you opt out, are you out? And then how are we going to deal with shared materials? Because I understand the state is prohibiting shared materials. So how does that affect specials? Are the special teachers coming to the classroom? Are the children traveling at all with specials? Are they not going to happen at all? And then how are you dealing with populations that are moving, such as aides, substitute teachers, and paras that are moving from school to school and are being exposed to various different populations within the school system, different grade levels, and different kids? And then hopefully... And then hopefully, at some point, there'll be questions addressed about after-school programs and mixing kids together, such as the question about extended day. Sorry to throw all that out you, but I have a lot of questions. Thank you all.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Your time's up. Now we're getting to the bottom. Next.
Yes, hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Thomas Coliford, 2 Serral and Drive. We have two kids in the elementary school. And the question is, I know you guys are offering options for virtual, for people to, you know, do kids virtually. Will you offer then option for in-person in place of the people that do decide to go virtually? Okay. Thank you.
I'm not sure I understand. Do you want more, more in-person to take up the room of the virtual? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. If, let's say, a lot of people take the option to go virtual, freeze up for in-person kids that are an option? If, because I have both working parents. So will that be an option to take their spots and have my kids?
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, Como Nedorkar, 15 Cort Lane. Alumni of Wayne Valley High School of the class of 2016. The faculty, staff, and students of Wayne Schools, including Mrs. Reikman, my fourth-grade teacher from the Windows program. Hello again. Shaped my life in countless ways. And it is because I care strongly about Wayne Valley that I am advocating for us to change the mascot. When we use races as mascots, we entirely plant a stereotypes. And having gone to Wayne Valley, I promise you, there are no respectful portrayals we're using. In fact, the land that Wayne, New Jersey sits on is the land that was once inhabited by the Leni Lenape. Our mascot is a warrior in all our portrayals. And our mascot seems to have no idea that the Leni Lenape were a famously peaceful tribe that put up little resistance to the English settlers and invaded their shores. New Jersey actually recognizes three Native American tribes, all in some way related to the Leni Lenape. And during the past few years, the New Jersey government has tried to strip these tribes of recognition and then reinstated it. Wayne Valley didn't teach me any of this. So the point is, the argument that the mascot represents some sort of pride in our local history is flimsy at best. I'm Indian myself, in that my parents came to the US from India. So I was doubly a Wayne Valley Indian during my time there. And I'll tell you, I was offended. It is not that it was fine before. It only has recently become racist. It was racist before I went. It was racist while I was there. And it remains racist now. And it will be racist two years, five now. So you can change our mascot now, or end up as one of the last schools in the nation with a racist mascot and get even more bad press for it. Because this will only snowball. Thanks for hearing from me tonight. Please consider this change. That's it for me.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Neela Alba, and I am a resident of Wayne since 2017. I am a Native American that is disappointed in my town, knowing that there is a mascot that is degrading to my race. I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but after hearing the people that are for keeping this unacceptable mascot, I felt I had to say my part, especially being a Native American. It's the, it's the opposite of an inclusive community, and it doesn't make me feel comfortable being in a town that degrades me and my children's race. You are not honoring my people. You are being insensitive to the way my race has historically been insulted, disrespected, and eradicated. Now, on a different topic, as for schooling this year, I came into this meeting late, so I know I heard some of these questions. But as, as for the virtual schooling, I was wondering if there was an option for children that have family members that are immune compromised? Can they just take virtual learning? And later on through the year, would those students be allowed to enter the school year once COVID is no longer an issue? My last question is, what measures will you be taking to prevent parents from, from bringing in their children if they or anyone in the household have been recently tested? There have been cases where people are getting tested and going to work and sending their kids to school while waiting for their results. Putting, putting everyone at risk on all those days in between testing and results. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello?
Hello, you're on.
Hi, how are you? My name is Jody Tribasian. I live at 37 Smith Lane. I have three students in the Wayne School District. I have one child that will be a sophomore in high school, and I have two in the elementary school system. I can tell you that online learning for my younger children had been quite detrimental to their overall mental health and well-being, even with the best intentions and efforts on their teachers. They did a great job considering the circumstances, and I applaud them for everything that they did. I don't understand where we are right now, okay? And returning back to school with two days, a total of 10 hours for elementary schools for in-classroom learning, when our numbers in New Jersey are very low. Children from the ages from five to 17, okay? There have been zero deaths in the state of New Jersey at this point, based on the data from the State Department of Health. Okay? And I just feel that we have to be realistic in what we're doing to help our children right now during this time. Okay? They need their teachers. They need structure. They need to be in the school system. Okay? I want to know, in November, what your criteria will be to make an adjustment, okay? Where we can continue on this path of two days and in-classroom learning, and then a wellness day, and then online learning? And what would change at that time? What data would change our path? Okay? There are, you know, children overall do very well if unfortunately they are infected with COVID. And I know we're taking all the precautions that we need to do to make sure that our teachers and children are safe. But what are the criteria that this town is going to say is important that we have to meet to make a change? So we can continue and get back to some type of normalcy? Now, I know COVID. I'm a frontline provider. I'm a nurse anesthetist. I'm taking care of these patients. I put myself at risk every single day when I go to work. So I know the risks that are out there. But I just feel that we have to really think about the data in this state that affects our children, okay? And try our best to get them in the classroom as much as we can, because they need it. They need the structure. They need the in-classroom support. They need their teachers. It's not the same with online learning, even with their best efforts. And they have done a great job, okay? And I'm very proud of my children's teachers. They've done great, great work. But they need to be in the classroom. So I just would like to know.
That's your time. Thank you very much. Next. You're live.
Hi, how's everyone doing?
Can you name the address, please?
Yep, this is Scott Overlook Ave., Wayne, New Jersey. I want to support the last caller's comments. Everything she said was spot-on, and I support everything she just said. She is somebody that should be listened to and taken seriously. So just please keep that in mind. Secondly, to all the high school people that were calling in, all the young people, I just ask, and I respect their decision and their thoughts, I just ask if they would have the same sentiments prior to March 25th of this year? That's, that's my only question to them. Number three, as far as money, again. So the parents are teaching their kids three days a week now? Please, keep in consideration that we are going to have to keep one parent at home from work and teach our kids. So there's got to be some kind of compensation for these parents to teach our kids three days a week. We are not teachers, and we're not teachers for a reason. All right? Even if we teach them three days a week, our kids are not getting the same education that they would face-to-face with our teacher. And God bless the teachers that are doing what they do every day, because they're doing a great job. But our parents are not teachers. So please keep in the consideration compensation for our teachers, for our parents that are teaching our kids three days a week. And thirdly, Dawn, again, that pizza looked delicious. I would love to know what was on that pie.
Hey, repeat callers are not allowed. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Dawn, it looked delicious.
Dawn, what kind of pizza was it already?
Uh, I got it from the new place, Basilica, where American Heroes BBQ used to be, up on Amber.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's only a...
Next, and stop calling, Scott. Hello?
Hi, hello. My name is Sumit. I'm from 22 Daniel Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. I just had a quick question. So my daughter, she is going to go first grade next year. So for kids that age, like five or six, I was wondering, I understand why face masks were mandatory and makes sense. But I was wondering if there is going to be a color-coded face mask? Because I feel like kids, they can wear different face masks with different like, you know, characters and stuff like that. And like, kids can come back home and demand for like, you know, different face masks every time. So are you guys going to put any rules around, like, you know, just a plain, if you're in first grade in the morning session, red, white, black, blue, whatever it is, it's just a color-coded? Or it could be, anybody could wear anything they want? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, next.
My name's Jim Frieswick. I resided 1212 Summer Hill Road in Wayne. I moved to Wayne when I was 10 years old in 1960. I went through the Wayne Public School System, fifth grade through 12th. I'm a graduate of Wayne Hills High School, class of 1968, the first graduating class. But before Wayne Hills opened in 1966, when I was a junior, that was the first year it opened, I was a sophomore at Wayne Valley High School. So I'm a former Wayne Valley Indian, in addition to being a Wayne Hills Patriot. And I have to thank Amanda Keel, that student from Wayne Valley High School, for instituting that petition for Wayne Valley High School to change its nickname, the Indians. You know, when I was a sophomore at the age of 15, we didn't think much of it at that time, because we had not been educated in the history of the indigenous peoples of the United States of America. And, but times have changed. And a few years after I graduated, the American Indian movement began in this country. And we became more aware of the tragedy that the indigenous peoples of this country suffered from the white immigrants. And for a white suburban community to use the nickname "the Indians" for a high school nickname, I think is wrong. And, and, and I, again, I thank Amanda Keel and all the other Wayne Valley students and Wayne Valley alumni who spoke tonight, and all those people who signed that petition to change the name. It's about time we changed that name. It's cringe-worthy. It just doesn't pass the cringe test. And, and that's all I have to say tonight on that subject. Thank you very much for your consideration. I do have one question though. Does the board intend to hold a plebiscite or take a survey of public opinion in the general community regarding whether or not the Wayne Valley Indians' nickname should be eliminated and changed to something else? You know, are you going to hold a vote, some type of survey by email or what have you, to gauge public opinion before you make a decision on this issue? And when, when do you plan to make a decision on this issue? Because I think these students deserve an answer, one way or another, fairly quickly, because it's an important issue. And I think the board of that is going to have to take a stand and a vote, one way or in another.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next. You're getting there.
Salam Harun, 1744 Ratsa Road. I appreciate what our community has done in order to keep us safe during these unprecedented times, but this mascot issue still needs to be addressed. It is embarrassing that our school mascot is still the Indians when other towns in New Jersey and a professional football team have changed their insensitive mascot already in the past few weeks. I believe that we are capable of instituting this change, if not right away slowly, by at least starting to stop the distribution of apparel with a Native American face as a logo. Then slowly, we can make this change, this school change for the better. I understand that not everything can be done right away, but that's an excuse to avoid the subject altogether. Wayne has a history of racism, and keeping this mascot is only delaying our progression away from that. Something must be done to change the mascot, and we as a community have to address this issue directly if we really have no place for hate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Kim Woodhour. I live at 15 Andover Drive. I wanted to know, for those parents who do get their children into the Boys and Girls Club or the Y, will these, will they be supporting the remote learning? Or will it just be childcare for the three days a week? And if they are supporting the remote learning, what does that in fact look like? And I do want to acknowledge the woman a few callers ago who spoke about really understanding what kind of data is being used. I agree, the, I too want my child in school and understand how important it is and really want to have a plan of what will allow Wayne to make the change to go to full-time school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello?
You're on.
I am down at 36 Lake Trail East. I'm an educator in Wayne, and our son and daughter both attended the Wayne Schools. They're both graduates of Wayne Valley High School. And I just want to say, we have the saying, "Valley Pride." And it just, it made me so proud of the young people that I heard that stood up tonight and spoke, and spoke out. They're seeing something that they believe is an injustice, and they're doing the right thing. And I know this board is listening. And I know you're going to listen to them. And I know that you're considering them stay-home holders. And I know that they're going to be included in whatever decision is made for Wayne Valley. So I just want to say, it makes me so proud. This is, this is part of what education is about, to teach people to stand up and take a stand when things are not right. So I'm just really proud of these young people. I'm also, I'm also calling because I was wondering about outdoor instruction. I'm an educator in Wayne. You know, PE teachers routinely take their classes outside. But has there been any thought to increasing outdoor instruction for classroom teachers and for other specials? Just because, obviously, when you're outside, there's less of a problem with the airborne contaminants that might be in the air versus indoor? Also regarding the masks, is there going to be a particular quality of masks required? And if kids show up at the school without masks, will there be some on hand, such that, you know, like kids forget their lunchbox, maybe they forget their mask at home? Will we be prepared as a school to provide students with masks if they're in that situation? Also, I teach music, so I have, there are many questions, and the research is still being gathered about this, regarding applied music, both vocal with wind instruments as well as instrumental choral. The problem with the singing and the projecting of the voice in the air, has any thought been given to this? And also with bathrooms, my classroom at one of the schools happens to be next to the bathroom, and you could wind up with four or five kids from different classrooms in that bathroom at the same time. Teachers might not be aware that kids are coming from different rooms. Has there been any thought to coordination so we don't wind up with larger groups of kids in the restrooms than there should be as far as social distancing? And thank you. Thank you for your doing. Thank you to everyone that was involved in all of those subcommittees. I know it's a lot of hard work. Be well.
Thank you. Next.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is John. I live on Alps Road. I just wanna talk about the Wayne Valley mascot change. I just wanna talk about how I feel that is very necessary, and I really hope that the Board of Education members really take into account what us students are talking about. I'm currently a student at Wayne Valley, and I not only feel the, the prejudice, but I also see it with my, with my peers, especially my peers that are BI, that are BIOC and LGBT2+ I just wanna talk about how there are some many symbols in our school that project this narrative of pro, um, pro mascot. I really feel that really needs to change. For instance, there is a, there's a mural in our school that talks about, I'm sorry, that shows a sap, a savage-like Native American. I feel that is very, not only disgusting and vile, but it's so inhumane and not moral. I think that that not only shows how Wayne Valley feels about Native Americans, but I also feel that it's projecting to other schools as well, and not only other schools, but other people in our community. I feel like as a community, we need to change this, and I think it's, I think it's time. And to people who have spoken before that are for keeping the mascot, I think that they have to take into account that it's not just what's happening now in the world that bring up, um, Black Lives Matter, but this has always been discussed, and everyone has felt this in the past before this whole coronavirus and BLM. Like, like, everyone just needs to take into account everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Michelle again from Kimberly Place. I promise not to talk about Black Lives Matter.
In a minute. Michelle, are you a repeat person?
Yes.
Well, we prefer to speak to everyone else first. I'm sorry, we don't allow repeats until the end.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Next. Go ahead. Hello? Are you there? Next, Mr. Burchard.
Hello, Marcus Shacknow, Six Brent Report. Ooh, man, I'm looking at 11 exhausted faces. Um, so let's address that elephant in the room. Um, I, I actually just wanted to take this moment to, um, fully support you guys and the work that you've been doing, especially from Donna Reichman and, uh, Mark Toback have come out with some really amazing statements about not just being not racist, but also being anti-racist. So I trust that you guys, um, have your hearts in the right place to do the right thing in regards to this mascot. Um, I would like to actually celebrate and cite your curriculum that you wrote. Um, the 10th grade English curriculum, uh, there is a unit for indigenous literature. Um, and I went into that curriculum, and, uh, I wanna bring out two of the, quote, "essential questions" that are, um, written about in that curriculum. The first one, the first essential question that we ask 10th graders is, "How did early American literature reflect the discriminatory attitudes of our culture that continue today?" Now, the leap from literature to imagery is not a big leap, so, um, my question, or my, my prompt for the people that are, uh, supporting keeping the mascot is, um, "How did early American imagery reflect the discriminatory attitudes of our culture that continue today?" Um, Eric Freed said, "Let's educate and not eradicate." Well, you guys are really doing a good job educating us, and that is one of the essential questions that you guys asked 10th graders. Another essential question is, "How does the meaning or purpose of a work shift in light of new theories and new philosophies?" How does the meaning or purpose of a work shift in light of new theories and new philosophies? So this is what we're asking our 10th graders to kind of analyze, is how things change and how we can see things in new, evolved manner. And if we can ask 10th graders that question, I feel damn sure that we can ask grown adults those same questions. Also, in the curriculum, it says that, um, it aims to make our students globally competent. A lot of things have been said, such as, um, you know, the townspeople are more important than the national community, you know, it's our town, we should be able to do what we want. Um, and that is not globally competent. That's, uh, communally exclusive, or, uh, it's not too far off from segregationist. So, uh, again, if we can ask this of our 10th graders, uh, if we could ask these questions of our 10th graders, I think we should be able to ask it of our adults. So, I think that you guys are doing a really good job. Kathy Kazan, you said, "The only thing we can count on in this pandemic is change," and luckily, this is one of the most straightforward changes that you guys are gonna have to make this season. So, keep doing what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Perfect timing. Time's up. Next. Okay, you're on. Hello? Hello? Okay. Next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello. My name is Jeff Robinson. I live at 22 Osborne Terrace, and I'm a rising senior. I would like to speak about the whole change to mascot issue. I've never seen Wayne Valley make Native Americans look bad. I think instead of canceling history and our pride, I think that we should further honor natives by dedicating games or setting up donations to reservations in New Jersey. So, I've also never seen Wayne Valley disrespect natives through, um, the headdresses or the paint, because people who are offended don't really know what it means. Um, the paint me, they say that the paint means savagery. It actually was thought to have magical powers of protection to natives. Also, the money that would be needed to fund this change is above six figures, and we just got a new field that costed a lot of taxpayer money. Um, also, a bunch of people are saying, "Oh, we live in a predominantly white town, and so we can't use a mascot or a name," is, I think is ridiculous, because if we're gonna try to be, strive for equality, that's, that's not equality. You're just canceling out history and everything. Um, and the only reason that big teams are changing their names is because politics are getting involved and people are boycotting, which is very different from our situation. And again, I don't think we've ever thrown any dirt on the name, logo, or mascot of Wayne Valley Indians. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, this is Chrissy Solentakis from 14 Garvey Road. Um, I wanted, uh, some clarity on the K-Rock program. It sounded like it was not gonna happen, but it also was not 100% clear about whether it was gonna happen or not. And so I wanted to know, um, if there is any plan still being discussed, and if that is a possibility at all. I know it's an important program as the town is moving towards full-day kindergarten, and so, um, it seems that the kindergarteners will be in school for only, like, in person for only about four hours or four and a half, five hours a week. So, I wonder if, um, if there is any plan to still make that happen, as that seems an important part, um, of, uh, of the kindergarteners' learning. Um, I think that was the main thing. A lot of the other things were already, um, already asked. But, um, yeah, I wanted, it, it seems like a very short amount of time for the kindergarteners, where the town was obviously moving towards more time for the kindergarteners to be learning in person with their teachers. And so, um, yes, I wonder what, what will be done about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Elliot Franklin, and I live at 21 Keelana Drive. First, I wanted to say that when I went to the Black Lives Matter event in Wayne, New Jersey, obviously, it was the proudest I had ever been of Wayne. And I'm sure that all of you supported that event or attended it, because I know that you care so much about this town. And I know that the superintendent was there and everyone was there. Also, I just wanna put it in perspective that the word "Indian" is just blatantly not okay. Like, I don't, I, I, I don't know about you guys, but does it look like we're in India right now? You know? So that's, that's just my opinion on it. And imagine if it was other races in their shoes. Like, say you have Irish heritage or Italian heritage, and you were given mascots named after racist titles about those groups, racist and discriminatory titles. You see, how do you think they feel? Right? And if you look at the border wall right now, on the border of Mexico and the United States, heritage, Indians, Native American land, their pride, everything is being destroyed by this country, destroyed, everything they care about. Their sacred burial grounds are being destroyed by this border wall. And if you think that just changing the name of the, of the school isn't gonna make, isn't that big of a deal, oh, keeping it, you know, the town is, is gonna be the same, just think about, like, how much of a struggle they're in right now. People mentioned before, Native American reservations are the poorest areas of the United States. You can look it up. That's facts. It is the poorest area in the United States. For years, they have been attacked, driven off their land. If this is their land we're on right now, their land. So the fact that you think that you can keep their name, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. I see a lot of repeat names. If you're a repeat caller, we're not gonna entertain any of those comments again tonight. Uh, we only do that when we're under an hour.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes.
Hi, um, I was just wondering, uh, thank you again for all your efforts. I know that this was a big lift. Um, I was wondering if there was any consideration taken place that this, the way the schedule works out, that kids would be home for five straight days, um, whether it's Monday, Tuesday, and then go in Thursday, Wednesday, with the weekend on the, on the front end. Um, and I'd like to echo the sentiments that, um, you know, I, I am in a household with two working parents, and from day one, selfishly or not, our job was to keep our jobs. When there was 40 million unemployed people, job cuts happening, furloughs happening, we needed to keep a roof over our head to live in this great town of Wayne that we pay extremely high taxes for, going towards a school, and, and deservedly. I am not, I'm a parent, I am not a teacher. My, my child's house is not where they learn, it's where they act out, it's where they play with their friends. I just find it, the kids can go play on a playground and be in groups together, but they can't sit there in school. And for all the people down their soapbox today about the Indians, I am a proud first-generation Italian-American, and my parents came to this country with, with, with a suitcase and worked for $1.75 an hour the next day. This is the land of opportunity, and for all of its fault, it's still the greatest country in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello?
Oh, my God.
24 Pinnin Place, how are you? I'm not gonna take up more than one minute. Uh, thanks for all that you do. I know the hard work. Um, I think the administration has done a phenomenal job considering the complexities that we face. Uh, real quick, a couple of issues that I heard come up. Um, more in-person, you know, while that sounds great and is the best, uh, option for student learning, we do have to, school districts have to abide by, uh, what the Health Department is telling us. And those guidelines are still stressing the social distancing. So the fact that we have that many students in our buildings really prevent us from, when I say "us," prevent you from having that much in-person based upon the, you know, the stark reality that we have that many students, and the facilities, um, you know, can only hold so many students. And the other issue is staffing. There may be a number of staff that are unable to come in, and that's going to affect our ability to supervise students effectively and safely. So I think you've done a great job, um, and I was just hoping that, um, you know, you continue to do this type of thing in terms of giving the public an opportunity to share their thoughts, and I think what you're doing is, um, is right on target. So that's all I'm gonna say. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mitch. Much appreciated. Next. You're on. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please speak.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Um, so, have very many issues on this, but I would just like to say that the Wayne District has done a phenomenal job of going above and beyond for our children. And as a school educator myself, in a different district, different county, um, you guys have bypassed all the laws of trying to find exactly what needs to be done for our children. And I have, cannot say enough about how much you guys have gone through, and I appreciate every single effort that you guys have done. And I know there's a lot of negative, and some people go to the side here, and they get lost in the whole situation of what really we are facing. And I thank each and every one of you for your commitment to trying to make sure our kids are going to get what they need and deserve. And all I have to say is thank you very much, because you guys, you know, you get a lot of backlash, but in the end, thank you very much, because nobody really understands it unless you're in it. So thank you.
Thank you for your support. Next.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, how you doing? All right, I'll keep it short. Uh, this is John Q from Fairfield Road. I have two elementary kids in Ryerson. Um, I have one that's in the actual Gates Program, and I know that there is a Gates Track 1A, um, testing that needs to be done. I just wanna know, because I don't think I, may have missed it, but I don't think I heard anything about the Gates Program and your, um, and your rollout that you're having here. So I just wanted to know, as far as the Track 1A screening test, is that still gonna happen, as well as how would the, um, process go, considering, you know, half is gonna be in school, half's gonna be out of school, um, for the Gates Program itself? Um, and also, if there is, you know, an option, may, might have missed it, but maybe an option just for those parents that are not really comfortable with sending their kids in, uh, for those two days, um, to have a pure virtual experience. Um, my second question would be more towards, uh, speech therapy, 'cause I do have a son that's going to be in kindergarten. And one of my elementary kids is also receiving speech ther, therapy currently. I know when we went to the virtual training, there was, uh, you know, a one-on-one session, uh, with the speech therapist. I wanted to know how would that be implemented going forward? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next. You're on. Hello? Are they unmute themselves, Mr. Burchard?
They need to unmute themselves.
Hello? Hello? Sorry, no audio. Next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Don Seaman. I live at 11 Sloping Hill Terrace. And I've got three kids, one in elementary, one in middle school and one in high school. So we have a lot of kids in the program. And we've been well documented with our experiences with distance learning. But I had something that I wanted to share with you. I have a unique experience with, with someone who is a reporter for infectious diseases as well as having a high school teacher for a husband. And I wanted to share with you what she said about her feelings about sending her kids back to school in September. And this is what she wrote. She said, "As an infectious diseases reporter who's been covering COVID-19 since it was a mysterious cluster of pneumonia cases in Wuhan, China, I've gotten to know this virus very well. So I will not be sending my kids back to school this fall. Not because I don't trust schools, teachers or the state, but because I don't trust the virus. From what I know about infectious diseases as a reporter, this virus thrives in crowded, poorly ventilated spaces like schools. From what I know about kids as a parent, it will be difficult, if not impossible, to convince kids to keep their masks on, stay away from other kids or even wash their hands. And from what I know about schools, they don't have the resources to retrofit ventilation systems or staffing to keep classes confined to 10 kids in the same room for the entire day. Data shows up to 40% of transmission is asymptomatic and the virus has a long incubation period. Nobody would know if there was an outbreak until a parent or teacher or family member showed symptoms. And by then it could be all over the school. And once it infects someone, the virus is tenacious. More and more cases of multi-system inflammatory syndrome are being reported months after infection amongst kids who had mild or no symptoms. All the evidence used to justify reopening comes from other countries with far fewer cases, better testing and modified school reopening plans. These results are not generalizable to the U.S. There is no evidence that reopening schools is safe here. If schools do reopen, it will feel like sending my teacher-husband off to war armed with only his English and journalism degrees and quilted masks from Etsy. And because he has to go save the economy. While I can't control his employment, I can control my kids' exposure. And I'm not interested in enrolling them in a real-world study to test the hypothesis that schools are safe." She says all this from her perspective and I haven't, we haven't decided if we're sending our kids back to school yet for ourselves, but I just wanted to make everyone aware that someone with an infectious disease background has some real doubts about the safety of what we can provide for our kids. And we should just be all aware of that and realize how, how important this is. And that's all I have. Thank you very much and thank you for sticking it out all night.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. This is Bill Brennan at 28 Riverview Circle. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to point out as a procedural matter that one of the Board of Ed members, Matthew Giordano, seems to be having offline conversations during the meeting and I believe that might be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. I also want to address the caller who spoke after the gentleman who brought up the Irish and the Italian and saying if there was caricatures of Irish or Italian people, there'd be a problem that the town would recognize. The gentleman went on to say that he's a first-generation Italian-American and something about pulling yourself up by the bootstraps and everything all like that and the land of opportunity and all that nonsense that has nothing to do with whether you take a caricature of a particular race and then label them something that they're not and then use that as your mascot. I mean, animals are used as mascots. A lot of things are used as mascots. People are not mascots. Races are not mascots. But I'm just wondering if this first-generation Italian-American would be happy if the Wayne Valley gundaloons was the mascot? And it was a caricature of a man dressed in some sort of garb that was a caricature of Italian-Americans, whether it was from a mob movie or whether it was somebody with a tank top t-shirt and a cigarette hanging out of his ear? If he would feel as comfortable as an Italian-American having that as the mascot, as the Wayne Valley gundaloons, as he is, with ascribing the Wayne Valley Indians to a race of people who don't live in the town, had no choice in the matter and have said repeatedly, they're not comfortable being used as a mascot for the team that, that's representing the suburban white community of Wayne, New Jersey. So I'm asking him, not you, whether or not he'd feel that comfortable. And I just think it's absurd because I, as an Irish-American, would feel very uncomfortable if the Wayne Valley mix and it was a picture of a drunken Irishman ambling down the street was the mascot. Or if it was a leprechaun, if it was something else. I don't think that the leprechauns would be an appropriate, would be an appropriate mascot either. But some caricature of, of anything is not appropriate as a mascot. And I think that the young people of this community have got it right. The young people have said that there's education that needs to be done about what happened to the indigenous people of this country. Because they, they were, they were entirely subjugated by this, by this country. And now we're using them as a mascot. And it's absurd. And if they don't like it, and I don't like it, and most people don't like it, who cares what you liked 30 years ago? Because 30 years ago, this town was a different town and people need to change. People need to be respectful of each other and their wishes and their whims and their wills. And the race that, that you're using as a caricature and a mascot for this community is unhappy with what you're doing. And just because you don't find it offensive doesn't mean it's not offensive. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, I'm Sam Namder from 91 Lake Drive West. I'm a student at Wayne Valley and I had a question about how the hallways are going to work and if there was going to be any discipline on if people do not stay within six feet apart and how that's going to work. And then I do understand that it's important for children to have that social aspect of being in school. But I think that it's very important to keep in mind that, that we have to take the safest route possible to keep all students and staff members healthy for not only their own safety, but as well as family members that are at home that are at high risk. And that's it.
Thank you. Next. Hello? Sorry, you have to unmute yourself. Hello? Take that off, Mr. Richard. Next.
Hi, this is Erin Mills. I'm at 1 Junamore Court. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You're fine. Great, thank you so much. I'm a parent of three. I moved to Wayne about six years ago. My oldest is about to enter kindergarten. And I just wanted to voice my, you know, complete and full support of all the students who have so bravely and unselfishly taken time out of their summer schedule to join the Spirit Report call tonight and voice their opinion. And in particular, I wanted to address the comment that I felt was frankly provocative and inflammatory that asked those who've spoken up against the mascot to consider their viewpoint prior to March 25th. Even if the viewpoint was not in the consideration set before George Floyd's death and of course before the Black Lives Matter movement. I think it's important that students hear from adults like myself that, that is not the issue. The issue is that beauty comes from tragedy, such as the Black Lives Matter movement has proven, for us to take into consideration our thoughts, our preconceived notions, our, our dispositions, our biases, our tolerances. And whether or not you felt that way prior to March 25th is not what we're here to discuss. And so I commend you for evaluating your personal decisions and advocating for what you believe is right. Furthermore, I will say again, I tuned in to discuss the school plan for the fall, but hearing the young students tonight gave me tremendous hope that the children that I have that are now entering the school system, hearing the kids tonight who've been through the Wayne School System and are showing up in such a respectable manner, it gives me tremendous hope that regardless of what happens over this very difficult time of turmoil with COVID, that the school district certainly has the best interest of our kids in mind. And clearly, they're very capable of helping us rear wonderful young adults. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Next. Hello? You have to unmute yourself. Hello? Next. Sorry. We're having an audio issue.
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, I just wanted to, this is Maria, 14 Jacoby Drive. I just wanted to commend the Board of Education and recognize all the work that has gone into putting this plan together tonight. Many of the questions that I've had have been answered. I did want to reiterate my, my strong feeling. I have a child in middle school and wanted to reiterate my strong feeling about the need for direct interaction, student-teacher interaction, live instruction, even, even though it may be virtual. The importance of live instruction, that interaction between teacher and student is where the learning takes place, the interaction amongst classmates, which can be done virtually, you know, in keeping with, you know, safety protocols. And I also wanted to ask about parent teaching at home. If there is supplemental learning needed at home, I think parents need to be well-versed in the software tools and programs that are being used to teach the students so that they can also, you know, make sure that kids are keeping up with their homework. If they don't know how to access that software or how to use the software appropriately, it's all for naught. And then lastly, I'm a 46-year resident of Wayne and a, an alumni of Wayne Valley myself. And I, I, I was never proud to be an Indian. I was proud to be a Wayne Valley student and a Wayne Valley graduate. And, and I support all the students that have spoken tonight about the need for change in the Wayne Valley mascot. I think it's time that we've evolved as a town. And I think that the time is now. Even, you know, even if change can't happen this minute, given whatever financial constraints we may have, we can make that decision and, you know, evolve that change over time. But I think, I think no time like the present. So thank you for your time and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you. Next. You're on. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
I'm sorry, technical difficulties. My name is Patricia Brown. I'm at 1500 Ratsar Road. Let me start by just saying thank you for doing this. I'm sure for all of you, this can't be easy and it's a lot of work. Without a lot of thanks, so I'll say it now. Thank you. I would also like to say I'm a graduate of Wayne Valley, class of '89. And I don't think we have to belabor this anymore. You're all well-educated people. We all know it's time for a new mascot, so that's all I'll say on that. As far, I just have one question with siblings, whether they'll be going the same day. I know others have asked about that, even if they're in different schools. If they would be on the same A or B schedule. And finally, I just wanted to say that this virus is not the school's problem. It's not the district's problem. They didn't create this. They're reacting to it like everyone else. You guys are not responsible for bringing the economy back. You're not responsible for babysitting kids, for people to go to work. The teachers did not sign on as first responders. They did not go into the healthcare profession. They're teachers and they're now being asked to assume a lot of risk. And I just, I'm not sure what we're accomplishing with this plan. I think it's assuming a lot of risk with very little reward. And I mean that, I think the virtual learning was great. You know, I know everyone has a different experience, so I, I don't begrudge those who are having a difficult time with it. But for a few hours a day, I just think you guys are taking on so much risk with that and there's just not a lot of reward. The kids are not going to have the same experience they did when they went to school before this and that's not your fault. And I just think you're, the logistics of it, you're, you're just taking on so much. And the kids are only going to get a few hours. The teachers probably can't lean over their book and help them the way they used to. And I just think that what's being accomplished in those few hours in the building can be accomplished virtually. As far as childcare, let's face it, that's the family's problems right now. Just like finding food, finding Lysol. It's, everyone is faced with problems right now that I was never, you know, a coach, but now I'm coaching my kids because they don't have sports. I'm teaching them dance. We're doing a lot of things we didn't do before this. So to say that we're not teachers is so unfair to the school district. We're not a lot of things that we are right now. I'm a super online shopper. I wasn't that before. But I just, I just wish you would reconsider because it's a lot of risk on everyone, including your teachers. And I think they can accomplish that by having a few kids in a virtual class that they can help one-on-one virtually rather than all the risk that I think is being taken on by this.
Ma'am, thank you. I'm sorry. I have to cut you off. Your time's up, but I hope you've asked your questions. Next.
Ms. Kazan, the last person in the queue is using an older version of Zoom and it doesn't allow-
No, I've seen that name with that hand up the whole night.
It doesn't allow us to bring her into the meeting, unfortunately.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, Ms. Wolfert, but for some reason we can't admit you under the Zoom software you have. So can I get a move to close the public portion?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak, Ms. Kumar. And let's get on to our agenda. Where were we? Can I get a mover for Jay, approval of committee minutes?
I'm president. I'll move the whole agenda.
Well, we, we have some committee reports. You can move it. Move the agenda. Can I get a second? Second, Mrs. Share, but we still need to do our committee reports. So and read one retirement. Do we do that before or after the roll call? Hello, Mr. Moffett?
Either way, I gladly will take roll now and we could do committee minutes reports after. It'd be great.
Okay, fine. Then roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putto?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Harry's.
Thank you. Committee reports. Who would like to go first? Mrs. Share?
Tonight we met for personnel, myself, Mr. Pavlak, Ms. Kumar, Paula Clark, Donna Reichman, John Auerbach and Mark Toback. And I'm going to keep it very short and sweet because most, anything that is public knowledge, we've gone over already. We basically are just discussing staffing and what's going to happen in the upcoming months. That's pretty much all I could share.
Thank you. Next. Mrs. Putto?
Good evening. The Education Committee met yesterday morning.
The Education Committee met yesterday morning, July 15th at 10:00 a.m. Mrs. Share, Mrs. Kumar, and myself, along with Mrs. Reichman, the Assistant Superintendent. We went over the minutes for the last meeting. We talked about diversity, equity, and inclusion as goals through our curriculum. There will be LGBTQ information embedded according to New Jersey guidelines in parts of the high school curriculum. We went over the return to school plan, which Dr. Toback and Mrs. Reichman went over earlier this evening. So, you saw that part already. And in the future, they'll, we will be looking at policies. There'll be COVID policies coming out through Strauss Esme. I also have the facilities report for this evening. Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Bubba, and myself attended, along with Mr. Meso, Head of Facilities, and Mr. Moffett, our Business Administrator. There have been a lot of questions about cleaning and disinfecting. No, it's not just going to happen on Wednesdays, in answer to previous question already. There will be cleaning, safe and effective disinfectant, especially using electrostatic sprayers. And there will also be constant monitoring using special devices called ATP monitors. Facility use permits for fields are not available at this time. The preschool, the pre-ness preschool is due to open in the fall. And basically, the finishing touches are being put on the building and the parking lot. And we also discussed a memorial garden for Suzanne Koransky. Transportation, summer school programs are proceeding. Masks will be worn by students. And for the fall, new routes are being established with the bus capacity being at only 50%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Putta. Mrs. Albanese, I believe you have a report?
Yes, the Finance Committee met yesterday. In attendance were Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Kazan, Mrs. Albanese, as well as Mr. Moffett, the Business Administrator. We reviewed all the agenda items on tonight's agenda. We did see the PCTI contract this year, which is going to be for 153 students at $11,614 per student for the year tuition. In addition, there's three special ed students. The way this contract works is there's a figure upfront, then there's a reconciliation for the actual number of students done later in the year. You have, or you have just voted on a grant resolution item where $25,000 of that grant, that grant is going to be used for virtual curriculum development. We had no budget transfers. We had a lengthy discussion about the Sodexo food service pricing, particularly pricing for individual à la carte items, which obviously are not going to pertain to what we're proposing at this point. So, we did talk about the Sodexo contract guaranteed amounts that may not materialize based on how the year goes for food service and how that might be handled down the road by the Board. Business operations, the Board is in summer session now. They have summer operations going on. Our Business Administrator, our Assistant Business Administrator finished her job responsibilities last week. The new Business Administrator, Cheryl Leiting, has started, and they're already getting her ready to jump right into the audit. So, welcome to the district and lots of work ahead. We discussed the budget update. We got a formal notice from the state regarding our $625,000 reduction in state aid. This is still subject to the final budget approval by the state in August. So, there's a good possibility we may see some further reductions. We're looking at how we may offset that and obviously many additional expenses for the new school year to come. The ordering has begun, the purchasing has begun. The business office is in kind of a difficult position because they have to prepare both for in-school and virtual preparation for the school year. So, they're tackling that task now. The Early Childhood Center project is on time. They're finishing their final punch list, and all looks good for opening in September. The East of Two, we've received three quotes. And we're looking at a good rate on the money that's going to be borrowed with the July 30th closing. We discussed a facility use policy that Mrs. Putta already discussed, and what will come to the full Board as far as potentially waiving fees if permits do become available sometime during the year. We had a discussion about the monthly revenue coming from tax collection and how that's working. We discussed huge challenges financially for the district reopening plan and some pretty significant shortfalls we may experience in the enterprise funds and the potential loss of KRAP, what the extended day might look like. So, we had quite a lengthy discussion about what reduced capacity might do to some of these programs. We talked a little bit about transportation, and we had a discussion about the potential cost of long-term subs for teachers who only want to do virtual. So, the DOE is considering allowing that from what we were told. And obviously, there'll be a cost to that. So, Mr. Moffett, if you wanted to jump in with anything additional, but that's the Finance Committee report for this time. Thank you.
Can I get everyone, everyone report out? Okay, Suzanne, you want to read your retirement?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne Brokamp Hall. Joanne Brokamp Hall has been a teacher in Wayne for 34 years. During this time, she served at Ryerson and Randall Carter Elementary Schools. Her classroom was known for respect and kindness. Mrs. Brokamp Hall understood the care and structure her students needed. She set high expectations, and her students exceeded even her goals. She was always available to them in any academic endeavor or just to be an ear to listen. She looks forward to spending her retirement continuing to give back through volunteerism. The Wayne and specifically Randall Carter community will miss her, but we all know we are better for having worked with her. Good luck in your retirement, Joanne. Thank you for your service.
Some tenure, thank you very much. I'm almost afraid to say it, but we have a second public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to tonight's three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover?
I'll move it.
Mr. Pavlak, Mrs. Kumar. I don't see any hands raised.
See no hands raised.
Wait, wait, wait. Mitch.
Oh, no.
I see two hands.
Okay.
Mr. Bouchard? Okay. You're on. Hello?
Hi. So, I just want to speak about the mascot. Our mascot is racist. You guys can obviously see that from the petition.
Can I have your name first, please?
Lavleen. What?
I need your name and address.
Lavleen from Valley Road.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Lavleen from Valley Road. I want to speak about the mascot. Our mascot is so racist. You guys can obviously see that from the petition that has gotten thousands of signatures. You guys aren't blinds. You're only ignoring the problem at hand. I agree with all the students who have spoken about, spoken out about the mascot before. Having an entire race as a mascot is wrong, disgusting, embarrassing on your part. I see how tired you are of the conversation, Kathy. You know what that is called, white privilege. Wayne is predominantly white. We cannot decide what is and is not racist. Let the Native American organizations decide. They've already spoken out. They've been speaking out since 1960s. Let's listen and respect their position. Everyone who has said that they support keeping the mascot has not provided facts. They were all old white men who have simply stated their support and nothing else. On the other hand, students have provided research and deep understanding about the topic. These teenagers are smarter than you. Do you understand this, Mark Toback and Kathy Kazan? Are you kidding me? Why hasn't the Board of Ed stated their position about this publicly yet? Shame on you, Kathy Kazan, and everyone on the Board for the lack of activism on your part. I can see how tired you are. I pray that you either resign or get voted out. Also, shame on you, Mark Toback, for not doing enough about the blatant racism in our schools. We need more education about other cultures, but you have done nothing. Absolutely nothing. Shame on you. Shame on you, Dawn. Shame on you, John. Shame on you, William, Suzanne, Ellen, Donald, Dreschman, and Stacy. You guys have done nothing. You guys did not speak out, and you were barely paying attention during this meeting. You may think we don't see this, but we do. And we will remember this when we vote. What's this about Valley pride? Is this a joke? Should we be proud of being racist by ignoring this problem? You are promoting being racist without consequences. Those students in our schools are looking up to us, but we are doing nothing. Are you kidding me? I yield my time.
Next.
I know I'm a repeat, but I just want to say, wow, wow. I commend all of you that have been working hard, except for Black Lives Matter and the mascot. This is about school tonight and returning to school. And I think that we all need to focus on that and our children. And anyway, a couple of the questions, I know I'm a repeat, but I've been here for three and a half hours long. The electrostatic sprayers, is that safe long-term? Is it safe short-term? Are we elected to have a full-time remote learning and/or tutor? My child actually goes to speech. What's going to happen with speech? Are they going to be brought out of the classroom, brought into the classroom? Will they be masked with a clear mask? How will my child see somebody saying something? Because that's what speech is all about, seeing and hearing. What else? I'm sorry, I didn't expect to get back on. So, is completely remote and homeschooling an option at this point? The teachers, as far as like who goes Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday, will those children be able to remotely get on to their teachers' lives for the rest of the two days? I understand that Wednesdays will be strictly remote. Will those days be opted out for specials? I think we're all just really concerned with our teachers and children getting back to school safely. Will the kids be required to stay in their desks the entire time? For many children, that is a huge, huge problem. Unfortunately, children have deficits where they cannot sit still. They need to get their energy out. Will there be recess? Will there be options to read? Reading is a big thing in elementary school. Will they have reading time together? Will it be separate? Will it be totally undone? I think I'm back to the quarantine level of if a child is, and/or teacher, and/or anybody in the school or sibling is at the fact of a positive or a, you know, a positive level where you can be quarantined, how far does that go? Does that go past just the class? Does it go past the school? Will the whole school be shut down? I think just a lot of parents want to know the logistics of it, you know, like nursing-wise and just the safety. I think we're all at the same point right now. We just want to know the safety of the children. It's not a matter of getting back to work or getting back to school. We just want to know the safety of the children. And that's what I'm concerned most about. You know, this is what the Board of Education is about. And I'm going to start crying right now because as a parent, you know, we all have children. We've all been there. We're concerned about the safety of the children. That's what it boils down to. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more? Next.
Hello, my name is Katie. I'm at Hillcrest Drive. I was wanted to talk about curriculum in terms of diversifying the authors we read and particularly the stories told about characters. I am Asian-American. I have never read any books with Asian-American characters in them. As a person of color, that's very detrimental because you don't see yourself as a fully realized member of society. The first time I read about any Asian, any Asian person in any book, it was my senior year of high school, and it was about a Vietnamese child being shot in the leg during the Vietnam War, and it was about the soldiers saying that they should have killed him. I think it's very wrong to only focus on white stories because students of color are in the room, and they are not getting a complete education by not seeing themselves told as a part of literature. We don't read Langston Hughes poems. He's such a brilliant writer. And there's so many other authors of color that we should absolutely be reading. And I think it should be, more attention should be given to authors of color, and we should consider adding more and kind of rethinking the way we teach certain things. And it's just particularly important to me. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Jack, 40 Marlowe Road. I am a huge supporter of Keep the Indian, and I believe that instead of getting rid of our history, our history may not be beautiful, and it may not be what we want to see. But I believe instead of getting rid of our history, getting rid of the name, that we need to educate our students and create change so we can, let's say, create fundraisers and invite them to our events. Native Americans can be used. We can use them, and we can give back to them, just like we need to do. And that's all I have to say for now. I'm sorry that this has come up in the return to school Board of Meeting. But I would like to leave just with that note.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Ryan Howe again from Tendiliav. I just wanted to, I just wanted to stress that I feel that some of the children haven't been in the real world yet, so to speak, and being a healthcare worker and being in the front lines and dealing with COVID patients. I think it really would change their outlook if perhaps they focused maybe on donating some of their free time to a hospital, if possible, or doing whatever they can and seeing what's really out there and how it's been, you know, instead of focusing on an Indian. And I don't mean that to sound crude or upset or offend anyone, but I genuinely feel that the topic, you know, it's just silly at this point to me. That's my personal opinion. And I, I'm sorry that you guys had to go through it. I, I don't know. I just want to say thank you for your time again. And for the children, there's bigger things in life. I know you guys have passion for this, but you should really put your passion and dedication towards doing whatever you can other ways and being constructive. Thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Cindy Simon. I would have been originally just emailed this to Kathy, but I feel obliged to say it. I am in favor of equality. I'm in favor of- I am in favor of equality. I'm in favor of diversity. I think it's great that we're setting up a committee. I cannot tell you how many letters I've read on this topic from the million different places I work for and organizations I'm in that have talked about all sorts of diversity and left out individuals with disabilities. The reason I am mentioning that is because one of our speakers, who was so in favor of changing the mascot, said, "You're not blind." That is ableist language. It purports a negative stereotype of blind people, suggesting that somehow we lack knowledge and the like. So I'm all for educating, but we need to make sure we include all people when we're looking and considering diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next.
Hi, this is Alan Tempecku, forty-one Gibbs. I think I was the first person to ask four questions, which I was hoping to get an answer from Ms. Reichman and Dr. Toback. I have to admit, I think I forgot my four questions. It's been such a long time ago.
I wrote them down.
He wrote them down.
I wrote everyone's question down.
So, but what I would say is, I, in, I've sat through this entire meeting and I just wanna make some observations. First of all, most people have come on and have been very respectful, asking very intelligent questions that are very important about the safety of kids. There is absolutely no reason to be attacking board members or accusing people of things. Everyone has the best interests of children and of the community. I wish in retrospect, this meeting would, this was supposed to be, as I understood it, a return-to-school meeting about the health and the safety of teachers and students. And somehow, integrated in this was a lot of people talking about mascots and other topics. And I'm not downplaying the issue of a mascot. It's obviously that people are very passionate about it. They should have a right to be heard. And at some point, I would hope the Board would put this issue to rest and rule on what the answer is on the mascot. I'm not even gonna comment on my opinion. I don't know enough about it to comment, other than to observe that people are upset about it in both, on both sides. I also think, Dr. Toback, I appreciate what you said before. And I had hoped to come to this meeting not only hearing hundreds of questions, but hearing some of the answers, which I think a lot of them are the same. I hope we don't leave this meeting with just, hey, let's look on the internet and see it. At least if you could cover some of the questions, which seem to be common to some of the people. My four questions, and I appreciate Ms. Kazan that you wrote them down, was, does that mean if masks gonna be worn in the, in the building by all students? And since then, people ask all sorts of questions on masks. So I hope you could comment a little bit about masks. The second is whether, and I heard this question asked four times by four different people, the ability to stay home if someone says they're coming to school, can they change their mind? And if they, if the news reports will be changed or is it, once you're locked into that decision? The livestream, we heard that before. And I also asked if someone got ill, what are we gonna do? Since then, there was a whole array of questions. So I, I hope we focus on the school because we could all talk about mascots, but the most important thing is the health and the safety and the education of students, teachers. And not only the students and the teachers, but let's remember, if someone gets sick, they could bring this illness back to the people at home. So it's not just getting everyone in the classroom five days a week. It's about protecting the community. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Tempecku. Okay, next.
Hi, my name is Erin. I'm moving up into Church Lane next week. We're currently down on Valley Road. But I'm calling in to piggyback a little bit on what the gentleman said prior to me. I basically have two concerns that I would like the Board to consider in their decision-making. One of them, most certainly, is that although the students might be forced to more firmly socially distance while they're in the building, they're not all socially distancing when they're not in the building. And so as you go around town and you see large groups of kids out on their bikes, the other day, we saw fifteen high schoolers inside of Duncan without masks on, everybody just hanging out together. And so it really makes it imperative to be sure that, in order to keep our kids safe, that they're also as much as possible doing the safe thing when they're not in the building. And so because of that, we've really made our circle in town even smaller of people that, that we're interacting with, even with masks on outside. Because you see on social media where your friends and your friends' children are hanging out and what they're doing outside of school time, which is kind of concerning in not wanting to spread it. And I've heard a lot of people say that it doesn't affect children as much as maybe it affects other populations of age groups and demographics. But it doesn't mean that the kids aren't just transporting the virus back home or back home to grandparents that they live with or back home to parents or giving it to teachers and bringing it back to their families. So with that being said, I'm pretty firm and in, pretty expecting to keep both of my high schoolers home next year and do whatever virtual remote program you have. And so in that light, would hope that there's as much time and commitment put into the remote learning program as there is into trying to get kids back in the building. Because I think that Wayne did an excellent job on short notice, certainly in the spring. And we appreciated it. And, and both of my kids really excelled, which has, is a lot to do with their kind of personality, but, but also because of what was offered to them. My biggest concern is that having two kids in high school next year and having classes that are not taught via Zoom instruction. You know, when, when you have a student who has every vision and every ability in math and science to have goals of wanting to go to a school like MIT four years from now, and math is cumulative and science is cumulative, you can't do poorly in geometry as a freshman and then excel at calculus as a senior. It just doesn't happen. And so if the program is not going to be taught by a teacher that they can watch and learn from and everything is going to be some form of a YouTube video, then I'd like to know that sooner rather than later. So that at least I know I need to look for alternative courses outside of the school district in order to make sure that he's not falling behind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your concerns. Next. Hello.
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 Hi, this is Vincent. I'm calling because I wanna discuss the back-to-school plan. It should not only include whether or not students should wear masks and social distancing practices, but should also include whether or not we run back to a safe space that does not promote racist narratives and stereotypes. And I just wanna talk about how people for, who are for keeping the mascot, they talked, they talked about the students who wanna keep it, who want to remove it. I'm sorry, how we are kids and how we don't really know the real world. But I feel like they are looking at kids, and not only kids, but teenagers and more adults who, who are for this change. And they, they talk down on us and they think that we are not able to see what is happening. And, you know, I understand there's a pandemic. I understand that changing the mascot is not, doesn't seem like it's the biggest thing in the world for people by feel like, and if you wanna create a better world and while facing a pandemic and going back to school, we have to think about going back to school in all aspects and not just with social distancing and masks. There are so many more aspects to this. And I feel like, I understand that you, you guys have heard a lot about this. But I just want to reiterate how important this is. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, first of all, this is my first time ever being listened or go. I'm sorry, my name is Dan.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Dan Zikovich at Twenty-One Pond Circle. It's my first time ever seeing or hearing a meeting. And I just wanna say how proud I am of you guys staying and working so late into the night. You're doing a great job. And I've heard some tough, rude commentary, which is, I thought was very unfair. And I think you guys, I'm really impressed with the first time hearing you guys. My question down the road will be, you know, hopefully there'll be some type of normalcy down the road. I understand my kids will be going twice a week to school next, you know, next, next year. But like, what kind of notice rule will be that you can do a change? Like how, what timeline will you have for that? Maybe you had, maybe you had said that hours ago and I just wasn't here to hear it because I came and I know halfway through. And, but I'd like to hear how you, how you go on the next stages, I guess, on how you will address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Aisha, Aisha Edir from Three World Look Right. I just wanna say that I'm a college professor at a very small college in upstate New York. And we have been thinking about this in opening the college or classes, courses for this fourth semester. And then we have been having every week, three, four, five hours meeting. And still, we're just thinking that it's not safe for our college students. And I feel that the decision about the elementary school students, middle school students, and high school students in Wayne, it's if you open these schools, it is gonna be a very brave decision. Again, our college students average ages around twenty-three, twenty-four. And then we're talking about, you know, the seven-years-old child and ten, twelve, fourteen years. And then I don't think that they have no idea how they can protect themselves. So it's, you know, masks, social distancing, although they have been seeing everything on the TVs and parents, they have been talking about these things. And then they have been witnessing these, you know, the things. But still, I don't think that they are ready to go to the classroom. And then I don't think that the schools, teachers are not ready to go to the schools. Again, I just, yeah, wanna thank you for these, you know, the all efforts. But still, I feel that it's not safe for my daughter. And I'm gonna keep her at home this year. And that I can, we can catch up next year as long as she's healthy. We can catch up with the school works next year. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Stuart, Resmer eighty-two, New Street. I've been on the phone all night long, listening to all of this. And I have to, I have to give you folks credit for the time you've put in here tonight. It, it, it really speaks as to who you are and what you're about. So what I'd like to do is offer a little statistics this week. Twenty-three states or forty-six percent do have mandatory mask-wearing policies in public. The remaining twenty-seven states or fifty-four percent do not have mask-wearing mandatory policies. As we all know, the COVID-19 statistics are increasing with thirty-five states or seventy-six percent having reopened in May with very few restrictions. Seven states or fourteen percent have decreasing cases after opening at the end of May with major restrictions. The remaining eight percent are flat. New York and New Jersey are in that category, sixteen percent. The message for medical professionals, public health officials, and epidemiologists is the same. Increased cases are due to widespread non-compliance of social distancing, not wearing masks, and people in closely crowded venues and possibly salons, restaurants, and bars. A lot of people aren't taking this seriously. I just drove across the United States to Los Angeles and back. I drove a thousand miles a day, every day, to do that. And I went to the gas pump, squirted the pump with some sanitizer to make the sale and went on about my business. And I gotta tell you, all the way across the United States, people are not paying attention. People are not wearing masks. And this thing is not over. So as you get ready to make these decisions of what you're going to do with the schools, keep these statistics in mind. These people aren't paying attention. I don't, I don't know what it's gonna take to get through to some of these people, including the mayor with that stunt he pulled a couple of weeks ago. You know, it was just astonishing. So this thing isn't over. People aren't paying attention. And, you know, unless it strikes their family or someone they know or someone they love, it's really not gonna get home. So this thing is deadly serious. I said it before. And, you know, I don't know what it's gonna take to get through them. But I really, I really wanna thank you for the effort you put in tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We have one left.
Hi, thank you for your effort and me staying late tonight. I have some different approach for this problem. I see it's like kind of weird when the country was locked off and the school, stopping for school, the student to go to school. When we have just a couple of hundred in the USA, a couple of hundred positive cases. And then now you have thousands and thousands of cases in every state. And then we open school. So something wrong here. Their first decision or the second decision? I have five kids and I let them to go freely. They came like, they visited like five states or more just a few days ago. I'm not worried about them. They are from five years up to eighteen years old. I'm not worried if they go to school like regular like before. I believe they, they caught the virus or have the immunity already. I'm, I am happy that if they got the virus already before. So they have the immunity now. I'm not scaring from the virus anymore. So the other thing is here, if we open the school and the, the kids go, you know, the problem is, for this age, for, for this, for the kids, students in the, in the school, they are at lower risk in this age. The problem is, if there is a student is overweight, above, like the BMI above thirty or thirty-something, this is a higher risk, even if the five student in the, in the class. If the student has allergy, has a problem in their chest, this is at higher risk. So we'll have to take care of this point, even if they are just a five student in the class. Okay? So the other thing is, putting masks all the day on the, in the kid's mouth and the breathing is, is a problem. If the, if the student has the virus and they put a mask on his mouth, you condense it, the problem for him and he's gonna be in higher risk. His breathing, his, like, he's sneezing and they take his breath again from his mask. So he, like, he, he's at higher risk now. Burden chemicals everywhere. The kids who has, the kid who has allergy, it gonna affect on his chest and his lung. So, anyway. So the way we are talking, some points here, I don't like, feel like it is the best option. Also, if we can take like the temperature for the kids, if they're gonna go in the school, if we can stay at home. And I'm just giving my opinion in different ways. Okay? So the other, the other points here, when you put the kids come one day and day on and day off, it gonna be like missing with the schedule. It gonna be like, it's not the right, maybe if we can put shifts.
Sir, sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next. Hello. Mr. Moffett, could you give me the time? Because my phone is dying. Let me know when their three minutes are up, please.
Will do.
Thank you. Is anyone there? Sorry, next.
Yes, hi, my name is Tanya Shakir Dreera. I live on Twenty-four Swiss Terrace in Paconak Lake. I just wanted to first say thank you to everybody on the Board for all of your effort. But I also just But I also just wanted to make, uh, an important point. Uh, luckily I'm employed by, uh, uh, an employer who decided to keep the doors of the office closed. So we've been, we've had the privilege to work remotely and to work from home. Um, I do have a type-one diabetic child who's gonna be in second grade next year. So I will be keeping him home because he is higher risk. I will say that it is the responsibility of the parents to make sure that these children are safe. And I think that's, that's the priority here. So I, I commend all of your efforts, but I do think that there is a huge responsibility that lies on the parents to make sure and to understand that your number one goal is to keep these kids safe. So thank you for that. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, uh, my name is Hazel and I'm from twenty-five Gates Place. Um, my child is going into, um, the AP Terre Haute is his homeschool, but he got assigned to Pines Lake due to the K-Rap, uh, ladder lottery. Um, we're just asking if, uh, the K-Rap doesn't go through for this school year, is he gonna be going back to Terre Haute or is he gonna be assigned to Pines Lake with the other kids that were not, um, accepted in Terre Haute for the K-Rap program?
Okay, we'll get back to you. No one else? We gotta move?
Move it.
Mr. Padlock? Second. Okay. We're in the stretch. Dr. Toback, how would you like to handle answering all of these questions? Do you wanna do an FAQ? Do you wanna address some of the major points this evening? I'll leave that to you. You're on mute. Okay.
I'm on more. Okay, so, um, what I, what I think is appropriate is ultimately that there's a lot of people out there. There's still two-hundred-and-twenty participants. We're probably tuned in because they wanna hear some answers to these questions. It would be very difficult to go through all these questions and certainly, um, all the comments that were made regarding reopening of school, um, are questions that we'll consider. Certainly rounds out our discussion and what we, what we place in our FAQ in the coming weeks, okay? So, um, but I, I think it makes sense to go through some of these things and try to stick to some themes. And also to stick to, um, you know, the, the presentation that we did was kind of a summary of, of what the, the program would look like, okay? We can get into a little more detail now. Um, but one of the things to understand is that, um, so the, the plan that the district has, the proposal we have allows for a whole lot of flexibility. So it allows for parents to make a decision at some point to have their children stay home. If there's a situation where a teacher is quarantined, if there's a situation where a child is quarantined, there's a million variations of quarantining and being at home and also people not feeling comfortable sending the children to school. And so the plan allows for that. It does not require you, once you opt out and you say this, I'm gonna keep my child home, when the day comes and it feels safe for you to return your child to school, you're able to return your child to school. So I hope that addresses, uh, some of the questions that, that were out there. Can you keep your child at home for virtual instruction? The answer is yes. Can you return your child to school? Yes. Can you start the school year? And then if, for whatever reason, you don't feel safe or you don't feel comfortable or you're, there's a, there's a situation at home that makes you say, well, listen, I really, I can't have my child going to school. Those are all things that are accounted for and the other part is the instructional part, okay? So the idea in general is we wanna maximize our time with students, okay? And we know that that personal contact is very important. So we feel that the proposal that we have, um, definitely maximizes time with students, assuming that there is a foot classroom, okay? So in a lot of cases, what makes the most sense, thing that is really gonna help most with that person-to-person contact is delivering lessons that are, uh, a flip style, which means that basically a teacher's lecture, um, like a, like a screencastify that we use regularly at the high school level to deliver instruction. Those are things that students can view on their own and those are things that students can work through. There's, there's supporting materials that go with those things. And then once they're in person, they also have opportunities now to direct, direct, directly work with teachers. Likewise, the people who are out of school, the students that are out of school, the virtual, um, students at that time in the afternoon, right? They've already, they've, they're following along in class. They can still continue to, um, follow along with the school and the program and their classmates who are in person. And then at that point, that's when the teachers hop out in the afternoon and work with those students. So, um, will it be maybe a little bit of transition? Yes. Will it be something that will ultimately work out pretty well in the long run? The answer is yes. I think it'll be, like I said, it gives us all the flexibility that we need and it also maintains our academic programs. And we'll, we'll describe that a little bit more. Uh, one of the things we forgot to mention in part of our plans to keep teachers and students safe had to do with a question by Mrs. Klein at the fourth and fifth grade. So the idea is that as much as possible, we're gonna limit the amount of interaction. So, uh, rather than having students travel, there's always the, the option of having teachers travel. And when that's possible, that's something that the district would wanna pursue, is making sure that the, the students stay with their cohort and teachers travel. That's generally, um, the idea. Um, so the other part of it is, I guess, there's the question about the swivel technology. So that is, that is a device that is available that allows for live broadcasting of lessons. We purchased a hundred of them. They're hard to come by, but we're, we're gonna go ahead with a purchase of a hundred. We're gonna do a trial if they are well-received and if they work well. And if we are, they are something that really teachers find effective, then that would also revolutionize what we're doing here. So the idea is that you would be able to, um, go ahead. You would be able to, uh, as a student, log into the, to the class lesson that's being taught, see the front of the room, see what the teacher's doing, hear the, hear the lecture. And so that would really, it would be like a college setting, you know, basically where students can either be in person or they can be virtual, but they still just follow along with the class, right? One of the other questions was about, um, the whole issue with the high school and how that schedule looks. So I just wanna make it very clear, there's no situation where like the C cohort would always be virtual. So everyone rotates. So there's a rotation of the A cohort. They go through a whole block, which is four days. So in one week, they go through a block, then the A cohort goes out and just say, uh, the C cohort comes in, alright? And then they go to the week out and then the B cohort comes in. However, that rotation happens, the fact is that students will be in-person instruction for the whole week and then the two weeks out. So that's that. Um, so the other question that came up regularly was a question about siblings and what accommodations we made. Ultimately, that's something that the district has been looking at. How can we accommodate siblings? If there's a sibling at the middle school and there's a sibling at the elementary school, we have software that allows us to identify siblings and that's something we would definitely wanna do. So at the middle school, the elementary school, we expect that, you know, when you have the AA and then BB rotation, then obviously we want, um, siblings to be on one or the other, but not on both. That would be a problem. So that's something we definitely wanna be sensitive to and I know that will help a lot of parents. Um, there was a question about the CTA tours. So I'm not sure if, um, maybe that's something, if you want me to write a letter tomorrow that would sort of clarify the position of the district on the resolution that was reached tonight? I'm not sure how you wanna handle that.
Well, I was, uh, I had asked Mr. Geppert if he would explain the contract that was decided upon this evening, uh, so that the parents understand exactly what's been agreed to. And then worse, we should still contact them after the meeting because not everyone is here tonight listening.
Yeah, I just wanted to let, uh, the parents know, uh, we've been working hard, uh, fighting with CTA for the last two months. Part of the analysis that went on there was whether to sue or not. That would take a couple of years and be very costly, as well as being very difficult with the impossibility of performance that occur. What has happened is that now we have reached an agreement which the board approved tonight. Uh, the board is going to pay the parents who did not purchase the insurance, their cost minus fifty percent of the cost of it. So they'll be, uh, paid fifty percent, uh, provided there aren't any credit card chargebacks. In exchange, then CTA is going to reimburse the board with the amount that's paid there. And it was clear that there is no credit dealing with CTA in the future and that there's no, uh, credit will be paid on the CTA in the future as well.
Thank you.
Another, um, comment that came up was, you know, maybe there was the idea that maybe it's too risky for schools to reopen, that, you know, we should rethink that. We're required to reopen schools. So ultimately, the Department of Ed, Governor has determined that all public schools in New Jersey will reopen. Now, related to that question was, um, a, a speaker who talked about what standards would be used for the districts if we decided to close or make other changes. And so what I can say is that wouldn't really be a, a decision that would be made locally. That would be more of a decision that would be made at the state level or maybe a regional level. But at this point, like, for example, in New York State, um, Governor Cuomo there indicated that their standard is that if there's a five percent transmit over rate, then up to that level for a week, schools can be open. But if the transmit rate goes to nine percent, then schools will be closed. Our state has not made that determination and so that's something that's really, uh, out there and unknown at this point about when decision will be made to open, open schools further, close school further. It's something to be determined. Um, there was a question about, uh, there was a number of questions about this topic. Contact tracing or basic questions about who's deciding about if there's a quarantine, who was exposed to, you know, like, basically there's the contact tracing question. So in general, any kind of question that results from the district becoming aware of a COVID-19 case in any way, shape or form, whether it's from a parent, from the outside, from a vendor that comes to the school, there's a lot of different things that, um, would go on, that would mostly go on with our Department of Health. So those types of determinations would be made through our Department of Health and consultations. Or a local health official would be the person that really is the primary person we would go to, along with our school physician, you know, there might be some other things that we do to evaluate a situation. But the fact is, contact tracing process would take care of most determinations about what, what's gonna happen in the event that there's an exposure to COVID-19. Okay, um, so let's see here. Right. Talked a little bit about, um, you know, the other, the other important part here is, okay, um, going back to the classroom setup and the flexibility. The Google Classroom is the basis, right? So that, that's gonna be where all lessons come from. That's where all materials come from. So those Google Classroom accounts that the students have is really the foundation for their learning, whether they're in school or out of school. Um, let's see what else we have here. Um, there will be specials, okay? So, um, a number of people asked about specials, what's gonna happen? One, one, um, speaker asked about musical instruments and so would they be played? That's something the district is aware of. We're working on that question. There is a, a major concern about how it's possible to play, um, certain musical instruments, um, without creating an additional risk to students or for, uh, music teachers. Um, as far as cleaning, okay? So there was, uh, I think a misconception about buses. There was a speaker or two, maybe three, that talked about, um, the idea that buses will wanna be cleaned once a week. Buses would be cleaned. The reason we have the cohort model is there's daily cleaning. The deep cleaning, the clean from top to bottom and every nook and cranny of the bus would happen on the Wednesday. Okay, so the idea is that there is one day a week where there is, um, really extreme cleaning, I guess. That's why to say, like, we're gonna clean every last part of the bus. And then the rest of the week, there is still always cleaning every day and in between with every, uh, group of students. Um, it goes from one bus to the other. Okay, that's that. Okay, the other thing, there was a question about, um, what happens when there are, um, issues of teachers being out and how will we account for that? So earlier, there was a report from one of the board members and they mentioned the whole issue of permanent subs. That's something that we have at our high schools and now the district is extending that to the elementary schools and the middle schools with the understanding that every school will have these two permanent subs along with teacher coverages. And that should allow us to cover any absences that we have without necessarily going into a situation where you have outside subs. We're also gonna align our subs to each of our schools. So there are some subs out there, but they would be focused, they would only work in certain schools that we have in the district. So we're really gonna try to limit any, uh, external people from, from being involved in, in our schools as, as employees as best we possibly can. Um, the screening question, so there was a question about, there's a few questions about screening. The district is looking at that in a, in a bunch of different ways. I mean, ultimately, there are some, some issues. There's the issue of, okay, well, if you scan for fevers, but someone took aspirin, well, or some other Tylenol, it's something to reduce fever, that would be something that would, um, you know, that would kind of invalidate any process that we have. The other thing is, of course, there's the, the large number of people who are asymptomatic. So that is a difficult thing. Uh, the district is looking at an app and the app, the idea behind the app is that ultimately, um, it, it realizes a certain amount on parents and the idea that we trust you to screen your children and make sure that you attest before you send them to school, that, um, in the end, that you've evaluated them, they have no symptoms. We haven't been anywhere where there's a high COVID-19 rate. And, um, so that's something that we're looking at, that we will have more information for the next, um, the next meeting. There was another question about, was the union consulted? Um, was there, yeah, the answer is yes. The union has been a part. There's many union members, as I mentioned, there's over a hundred people that are involved in our committees. Many of them are members of our unions. Um, so is there hand sanitizers? Um, the answer is yes, there's hand sanitizers. Those were actually installed, uh, throughout the buildings right before we shut down in March. Um, okay. So I guess that, um,
Siblings?
Siblings issue we covered. I know, it's a, it's a late night.
I know, I can't even focus.
So I hope that answered a lot of questions that are out there. Um, we're gonna continue to update our information and then we will also clarify a presentation tomorrow to try to address some things that maybe weren't as clear as they could have been.
And we'll do the thought exchange and all of that will be communicated, how?
Yes.
You'll email the student population and then we'll put it on website and Facebook and everywhere it needs to be for the community to find it.
Anyone who wants to participate will know how to do that if they want.
Did you wanna address the mascot issue or?
I mean, we, we could certainly address it, um.
I, I, I just wanna clarify what we've done and what our plan is because it's, we are not sitting here doing nothing.
No, no, um, that is certainly not accurate to think that we're, we're not doing anything. Um, in the early part of the meeting, the district moved ahead. We did a presentation of a goal. And so I think that many of the people that, um, commented heard about the goal, but there was a specific part that calls upon the district to address that issue. It's a very specific part of the goal that calls for committee of people to look at that issue and to consider alternatives, along with all the other, um, all, all the other, um, related things, like, for example, tornadoes or whatever, whatever slogans, whatever symbols our schools use. We're gonna look at all of that, not just one, one mascot.
Thank you. Okay, um, Mrs. Reichman, did you wanna say anything else or before we go?
Uh, you know, just one last question because I know we talked a whole lot about elementary, middle school. Will not be able to be with the same cohort all day because they rotate around to different classes. Um, so that's important for parents to know. They will be moving. That's, um, another reason why we have the A days and B days because you want as few people as possible in the hallway and we'll stagger the schedules. If you saw there was flexibility so that we can limit the number of students traveling the hallways. And, um, if for, as far as the AP classes, what will instruction look like? Um, all those things will be addressed. We needed to, we need to land on a plan and we are gathering up all those questions. So now we can start reading and having those sessions. That's it.
Is there any old business? New business? Board comments? Suzanne? Mrs. Padlock?
I would like to congratulate our 2020 graduates. Um, I know technically our seniors graduated on June the eighteenth. However, uh, we did not have an opportunity to have a ceremony on our fields up until last week. And so that's when that ceremony took place. And the live streaming was terrific and I just wanna say congratulations.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, I wanted to say something briefly. Um, I am exceedingly proud of what this board has done, what this board is doing right now. I consider myself honored to be a member of it. Um, earlier this evening, somebody commented that I was talking during the presentation. That was true. I apologize. Unfortunately, we're in a virtual situation. As you can see, I'm, I'm a So you can see I'm, I'm in a basement, here's my aquarium here. I can control my wife not coming into the meeting. I can control my kids not coming to a meeting. I cannot control my two dogs coming into the meeting and one of them was particularly bad. If you want me to send the evidence, the conversation, yeah, if you want to send the evidence of the conversation to the NJSPA for ethics charges, I can send the yellow towel that's on the floor right now. My room smells really bad because of it. So I was not trying to disrespect anybody by having these conversations, but when a dog does what they're not supposed to do next to you, two feet away from you on the camera, it makes things interesting. So I apologize to everybody for not behaving the decorum I should behave in all the time. And I apologize to the people who were being interrupted by that, but I need to go get some Lysol.
Thank you. Okay, I have nothing to say. I'm done. Good. Let's go, Mark.
Uh, I actually did want to say congratulations to the graduates. I really wish I could have been there, but I had another family event and I couldn't expose my hundred-year-old grandmother to any possibilities. So I did want to congratulate actually the valedictorian and the salutatorian of Wayne Hills were former students of mine that freshman year. So for me, that's like kind of a really proud moment. And just the rest of the students as well that graduated at both high schools. And I really hope for them, we can get some normalcy at some time soon as they move on with the rest of their lives.
Thank you, board members, for hanging in there tonight and thank you to our staff who, I'm sorry, Stacy, you go ahead. I'll go last.
I just wanted to take two minutes, I'm exhausted. So I just want to take two minutes to say thank you to administration, not just Mark and Donna, who happen to be here right now and Joe and everybody, the entire staff for, you know, all the questions that came up, there are so many what-ifs. And if anybody's still watching for the hundred and eighty-eight or so that are still watching, I just want you to notice our backgrounds right now and notice that Dr. Toback and Ms. Reichman, I can't see Mr. Reichman, they're still sitting in their office and they've been there. Well, you haven't been there since eight AM, Kathy. They have been there since eight o'clock this morning, working. So for anybody who thinks that the district is not putting their one hundred percent effort into making sure that these kids are safe and that every single what-if question is answered, I can tell you, you're wrong. It's being done. They're working fifteen, sixteen-hour days. It's crazy and my hat's off to administration. They're doing a lot more than us and I, we appreciate everything that you are doing for this district in such unknowing times. So thank you and go home and get.
Good night. Can I get a move to close?
I'll move it.
I knew. Mr. Pavlak and Mr. Giordano.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you for hanging in for this very long meeting.